This is Director Hampson. I am now calling the March 24, 2021 Regular Board Meeting to Order at 3:30 PM. This meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands and traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. Ms. Wilson Jones, the roll call, please.
Director DeWolff.
Present.
Director Harris.
Present.
Director Hersi. Director Hersi. Director Hersi, I can see you there.
Yeah, switching over from Zooms, from Teams to Zoom, can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
Cool.
Director Rankin.
Here.
Director Rivera Smith.
Present.
And Director Hampson.
Here. Superintendent Juno is also joining us for today's meeting, and additional staff will be briefing the board as we move through the agenda. As we begin this meeting, I would also like to welcome LeManuel Donaldson and Trayvon Mitchell, who are joining us today as the student representatives from the Student Leadership Council for the Office of African American Male Achievement. We will be hearing from them later on in the meeting, as well as fellow Student Leadership Council member August P. Diggs, who will be leading off our testimony list. This meeting is being held remotely, consistent with the Governor's proclamation on open public meetings. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. Staff may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear our directors and staff. The first item of business on today's agenda is the appointment of School Board Director for the unexpired term for District Four. I want to thank candidates Erin Dury, Laura Marie Rivera, and Eric Sousa for your participation in this appointment process and interest in serving on the board. The Executive Committee discussed the process that will be used for this action item during the committee's February 10 meeting and determined that the process will be as follows. First, each director will have an opportunity to speak to the one candidate they are recommending. We will move alphabetically by last name, beginning with Director DeWolff. Once each director has stated their recommendation, staff will conduct a roll call vote. This vote will be taken in reverse alphabetical order, beginning by last name, beginning with Director Rivera Smith. If one candidate receives four votes, then that candidate will be appointed as the Director for District Four, having secured the required majority. If no candidate receives four votes, I will make a new motion to put before the board those candidates that received the most votes in the prior round of voting, or in the event of a tie, we will re-vote on the, sorry, in the event of a tie, we will re-vote on the full slate of candidates without a new motion. We will continue voting in rounds until one candidate receives the required four-vote majority. The order in which directors vote will reverse with each round. We will now begin with a motion and a second to place the three candidates before, by a second, emotion and then a second to that motion, to place the three candidates before the board for voting. I now move that the board take up for consideration and debate the candidacies of the three candidates for the unexpired term for the Director for District Four, Erin Dury, Laura Marie Rivera, and Eric Sousa, to be followed by a vote of the directors.
Second.
We will now start with Director DeWolff speaking to their one recommended candidate. Director DeWolff.
Thank you, President Hampson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, it's not loud, but I can hear you.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. I know my Wi-Fi in my house is wonky sometimes. I also wanted just to give my gratitude to the candidates who signed up and the candidates who remain. You know, as I watched the Youth Lead Forum a week ago now, and then watched the forum put on by the Seattle Council PTSA, you know, one thing I just felt was, at the end of the day, the fact that you candidates came forward, put your name forward, is a huge deal. And I don't want to let the moment go without sharing my extreme and immense gratitude I have for you, because signing up to be part of this work, knowing that it's all volunteer, knowing that it comes with a lot of work, a lot of sacrifice, I really appreciated that you continue to stay in this, and to volunteer your time and your talents and your efforts with Seattle Public Schools. So I just want to make sure you all know that that is a huge deal, at least to me. So in watching the forums, I was really compelled by a lot of our candidates, but I think the candidate that stuck out to me most, both based on their answers and also their grasp of the issues that I care deeply about when it comes to systemic transformation, racial equity, centering students, operational needs, and just an overall understanding of the district and our current work and our current values and our pursuits, particularly as this board. The candidate that I would like to put forward or recommend or support tonight is Erin Dury. So to all the others, I greatly, greatly, greatly appreciate you, as I said. And so I'll turn it back over to you, President Hampson.
Thank you. And then we are going in alphabetical order by last name, which has me coming up next. And I will just echo Director DeWolff in stating my tremendous appreciation for those that put your foot forward, your mind and your heart forward to consider doing this work. None of us actually ran for office or made this commitment in the height of a pandemic. And yet you've all done that. And I think that that shows at this very, very difficult time in education in general, an incredible amount of dedication and heart and bravery. And so thank you to each of you that remains today, but also thank you to those that participated prior to this, particularly to Mark Perry, who just recently withdrew his candidacy. His participation in the forums and in the process was greatly appreciated, but also to those who considered and then pulled out early. It's, I don't want anybody to have any shame about having considered it and then decided that it wasn't for you at this time. It is a very massive commitment. And so to those of you that are still standing, I really appreciate having spent time with each of you. And as I said, the level of commitment that it takes to put yourself and that of your families forward at this time, I think, is to be commended. And I've had the opportunity to speak with each one of you, to see you in the forums, to watch your videos and look at your backgrounds. And while you each have very strong qualifications and characteristics in terms of the balance and the direction that we're headed as a board, particularly with some strong background in budgeting and change management, I'm going to say that I will be putting my support behind Erin Dury at this time. I was particularly impressed with her areas of expertise and believe, in particular with her familiarity with the students that are in foster care through her CASA experience, that she's got a great deal of understanding about students that exist at the margins of our systems. And that's a really critical level of experience that I would like to see us have on the board. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Harris.
I'm sorry I'm coming first, because my two colleagues that spoke before me said many of the things that I wished to have said, so I will not repeat them. I will say, however, that the fact that Erin Dury comes from an option alternative school is very important to me. I will say that her CASA background and my background in the legal community makes that especially relevant and personal to me. The community outreach and change management is especially important to me, as well as is my conversation with Mark Perry, who had my vote previous to his withdrawing for personal reasons. And he has every right to those personal reasons, and I respect him even more now for recognizing what an enormous commitment this happy job is. And he says he's going to continue to help us, and I'm thrilled beyond that. And to everyone that put their hat in the ring, whether they withdrew or not, huge thanks and gratitude. We know where you live, and we will find a spot for you to continue to help us if you are not appointed the director. But my vote will enthusiastically go for Erin Dury. Thank you.
Director Hersi.
Thank you very much. As many of you know, oh, that is my teaching camera. Give me a second to get that figured out. I'll figure it out on the next one. But as many of you know, I was sitting in this seat a little over a year ago. And it is not lost on me how much time, energy, commitment, and just frankly, passion and all the anxiety as well around putting yourself forward in a way that is very public and in times can be very divided and divisive. And that is no small feat. I think as we enter a period of transition, both in our leadership and into physical buildings, having folks that are interested in jumping aboard this steaming bullet train is just very heartening. I think that as I think about everything that I've learned and everything that I needed to know in this role, I'm really excited about candidate Dury for a number of reasons that have already been stated here tonight. I think that the ability of all candidates who put their name forward to hit the ground running would be there, but with the special attention and focus, as Director Hampson has already mentioned, to students who live and students who frankly thrive in the margins of our society and what it's going to take for us to take those students and their experiences and put them at the forefront as we continue to figure our way out through this pandemic. I'm really excited about her candidacy for so many reasons, but the style of leadership and those lived experiences that are shared between so many of our students are going to be critical as we make sure that we reopen in an equitable way. So I'm very excited to put my support behind candidate Dury, and I'll pass to the next director.
Okay, Director Rankin.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I also want to express my gratitude and appreciation to everybody who put their names in the hat. I felt really fortunate during the process that we had a lot of really good options. That was really comforting and honestly, a little bit surprising going into this, knowing the circumstances that we're all facing right now in the challenging situation and the fact that, you know, the four, and the four who ended up being in it till close to the end, now three, that stuck with it would all serve our board and serve our students really well. I really appreciated Mark Perry's experience as a principal and a building leader. And given that we are a relatively young board, that in particular, just life experience also, and being within several systems as a leader was really appealing. So I do hope that he will continue to engage with us and support the work of the board. And let's see, who's next? Eric Sousa, the enthusiasm and willingness to dive right in and start digging into issues was also so appreciated. And for Laura Marie, your care and concern and wanting every student to succeed is so evident. And that also, that moves me a lot and means a lot to me. And so in the end, where we are, I'm also recommending Erin Dury for this seat, due to, as other directors have noted, in thinking about where there are overlaps, where there are gaps in skill set or less represented skills within the board that could be filled by one of these folks, who I saw filling those, particularly with budgeting and systems change and nonprofit experience was in Erin. And so, and in addition to her focus on students who have been marginalized and need our full attention. So I'm also recommending Erin Dury for this seat.
And Director Rivera Smith.
Hi, thank you. So likewise, I first and foremost want to thank all eight candidates who stepped up to be considered for this role. In the beginning, there was eight, including, so those who stepped down even, I respect their decisions and the foresight they had to make that decision. So then there were three, and I had the pleasure of speaking with each candidate to learn more about them and to share a little bit about this job. They each impressed me with their dedication to service and their sort of outsider insights that we unfortunately lose when we take a seat on this board. We've become accustomed to operating from an insider position. Personally, I think some of my best moments are when I'm able to recapture what it's like to sit in the audience, unburdened by the politics and the reticence, and solely focus on the issues and with the critical questions and insights that are really needed in this district. So they each have that, and they each, you know, we're going to bring that to this job. So which candidate is best brings that for District Four and for our district as a whole? I don't know that any of us can truly know the answer to that in this short timeline. This is a really quick process and it's a timeline established by state law. So that's why it was such a quick turnaround here. But I do take solace that the voters will have a say in this coming up soon here this summer and the fall. So they will get to decide who will fill this position in the long run. But as it's our duty to appoint someone to this role, starting tonight and for the next eight months. And while I think we'd be lucky to have any of the three, as Director Rankin mentioned, the qualities of each candidate that they would bring to this role, I feel confident in selecting candidate Erin Dury for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones, will you call for the vote?
Yes, and it's just going to take me a moment to get that all on the screen properly.
Director Rivera Smith.
Dury.
Director Rankin.
Dury, excuse me, Erin Dury.
Director Hersi.
Dury.
Director Harris.
Ms. Erin Dury.
Director Hampson.
Dury.
Director DeWolff.
Dury.
Vote is six votes for Erin Dury for the appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. And while I scroll, the newly appointed director for District Four is Erin Dury. Congratulations and welcome to the school board. The newly appointed director will now immediately take the oath of office with Superintendent Juno, after which our new board director will then have the opportunity to give a few remarks. Is Erin on? Ms. Dury?
Dury.
Okay, congratulations. And we're going to take the oath of office. So it's on the screen. If you want to raise your hand, you can. I, your name.
I, Erin Dury.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
Promote the interests of education.
Promote the interests of education.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Seattle School District Number One.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of Director of Seattle School District Number One.
King County, State of Washington.
King County, State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome, Director Dury.
Thank you. Should I speak now or is there a transition?
Or forever hold your peace, yeah. I'm not very quick to the trigger, but yes, I now invite Director Dury to offer a few brief remarks.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to all who participated in the forums and the process of this appointment, in particular, the NAACP Youth Council and the Seattle Council PTSA for hosting the community forums, and to all the directors for your thought process and words this evening. I am honored and grateful to serve District Four and the Seattle Public Schools. I recognize the privilege and position of power this appointment has and know that true service will be shown through action and centering community voice, particularly those who historically and currently do not have the access to have their voice heard. I know there is a lot of work to do and reconstruction to happen. I look forward to working within the community, particularly those most affected by the decisions of the board and the district. We have an opportunity to reimagine education and center the urgency of that new vision. I am ready to do the work, and I am here in service. Thank you.
Apologies for the delay again. Congratulations, Director Dury. We welcome you as a member of the school board and welcome your participation as we move throughout tonight's agenda. This is how we do it. You get voted in and you start voting yourself. So I'm now going to turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments.
Thank you.
Superintendent Juno, you sound very far away. If there's any way you could get.
Okay, I am super far away. It's a little better.
I don't, just across town.
I got it, I got it. Is it a little better?
It's a little better, yeah.
Okay, so thank you, President Hampson. Hello, directors. First, congratulations, Director Dury. You are joining Seattle Public Schools at a very interesting and critical time. But thank you for raising your hand to join leadership as we continue to tackle so many challenges. And we also get to celebrate successes now and again. It is a great organization filled with great people and look forward to working with you. Also want to welcome our young kings, LeManuel, Trayvon, and August. It's always good to hear from you and to learn from you. Thanks for joining the board meeting this evening. Last week, Seattle Public Schools and the Seattle Education Association came to a tentative agreement that supports a safe return to school buildings for all preschool, K-12, special education, intensive service pathways, and all kindergarten to fifth grade students. As a reminder, the tentative agreement must be approved by SEA, and their members began voting already, and their voting will end on Friday. And as you know, the bar on this tentative agreement is on tonight's agenda for your approval as well, Board of Directors. If approved, I look forward to welcoming back preschool students and students enrolled in elementary, special education, intensive service pathways on Monday, March 29, and middle and high school students enrolled in intensive service pathways and all other K-5 general education students on April 5. We are continuing to work with SEA to come to an agreement to bring middle and high school students back to classrooms, including sixth through eighth grade students attending K-8 schools. Last Friday, kindergarten through fifth grade families received an enrollment survey and an opportunity to choose between half-day in-person learning or 100% remote. Just a reminder to our families, we're making a big last push that the deadline for returning this survey is today, 11:59 PM. Today, Wednesday, March 24. We know this is an important, personal decision for families and students, and there really are no easy choices. There are no right or wrong choices, and we also recognize that this is a quick turnaround. The Governor's order to immediately bring back all pre-K five by April 5 significantly impacted our timelines. We had been working in partnership with SEA to thoughtfully bring back students who need in-person learning, preschool and intensive service pathway students, first followed by other students in a phased approach. SPS is the largest district in the state, and we are now working to respond as quickly and as nimbly as possible. Much of our final planning is dependent on survey results, including teacher assignments and your students' individual schedule. We need to know how many students are returning to each classroom as soon as possible in order to match teachers, students, and our space in our buildings. One thing that may not have been super clear during yesterday's virtual town hall was the question about whether you can switch to remote or hybrid later in the year. So just for clarity, once you make a decision regarding the learning model that meets your child's need, you will need to remain in that same model through the end of the year. So no changing. Throughout this pandemic, the health and safety of our students, staff, and families continues to be our top priority. We have followed local, state, and federal health guidelines in our planning. We have inspected and repaired all HVAC systems and buildings to make sure we're meeting air quality and ventilation requirements in each classroom. And in fact, the board has a bar tonight to buy HEPA filters for schools that need it. Before we return to buildings, staff will be placing door signage to show when rooms were last checked and when the next maintenance might be scheduled, occupancy of classrooms with appropriate distancing, and that the room meets public health guidelines. Building walkthroughs have been happening. They continue to happen all across our district to make sure our buildings meet the rigorous health and safety standards necessary. We've also distributed personal protective equipment, or PPE, for staff and students across the district. If you would like to view what preparations are done or in progress for your school building, check out the building readiness charts on our website. I also want to thank our partners at the City of Seattle, University of Washington, Seattle Cancer Care Alliance, and Seattle Indian Health Board. Around 1,000 of our staff members have been vaccinated at clinics that were prioritized for SPS staff, thanks to their partnership. This is a big step forward towards protecting the health of our staff, students, and community. And thousands more staff have been vaccinated through other health providers as well. So thank you to everybody involved with that. Second, I want to provide transparency around childcare in our buildings. At this time, we cannot guarantee that childcare will be available. At this time, we cannot guarantee that childcare will be available in our elementary school buildings. We know that childcare is a critical support for many families, particularly as you decide whether you choose for your child to return to in-person or to stay remote. However, with a safe return to in-person learning, following public health guidance for small cohorts and physical distancing, there may be changes to childcare. This will depend again on how many families choose to send their child back to in-person. But we continue to work closely with our childcare partners to limit those impacts and will share more information as soon as we can. Third, we've received a lot of questions about where students will eat meals and snacks during the school day. Our pre-K through fifth grade students will be learning on a half-day schedule or they will be learning remotely. Meals will still be available Monday through Friday by bus routes and meal sites across our districts as they have been. And students attending in-person will also have access to grab-and-go lunches. Students will not eat meals in the classroom except for preschool and Head Start, which is a federal and state requirement. Finally, I know that many families are concerned about how their students will get to and from school. And while at this time, we cannot guarantee transportation options for families to return to in-person, we will continue to work with our partners for student to increase the number of routes available. The governor's March 15th order, in addition to the half-day in-person instructional model agreed to with the Seattle Education Association, did not leave the transportation team enough time to rebuild routes and our bus contracted to hire and train the drivers that we all need. To serve students at the same standard as before the pandemic and to follow additional bargain agreements, we would need around 400 buses. And as of March 18th, about half the number of required bus drivers were available. We recognize and we're deeply concerned about the inequities created for our students and families during our pandemic response, especially those furthest from educational justice. To initially address this and keep school start and end times consistent, buses were prioritized for students that we are legally obligated to provide transportation for and those most vulnerable. We know these efforts did not go far enough for students who need it most. That's why we're increasing transportation for as many students as possible. But this will require a change to elementary and K-8 school start and end times. That's also on the agenda today. And if approved by the school board, elementary and K-8 schools will start at 8:00 AM for students in remote and hybrid in-person learning starting March 29th. This 30-minute adjustment will allow more students to participate in in-person learning and to access transportation. We're asking everyone to adjust just a little so that we can serve more students that need and want in-person learning. It's been over a year since we had to close our buildings and I, along with many of our students, family, and staff are eager to safely reopen our doors to be reunited with friends, classmates, teachers, and students in person. In addition to our return to buildings this spring, staff are working and the board is working really diligently as well on plans for summer school and next fall. And we all look forward to sharing more information on that soon. And then finally, as a quick look at public comment tonight shows that there are concerns from educators and community members about potential dual-language staffing cuts and dual-language Spanish course cuts at Mercer International Middle School. I appreciate the advocacy that our community keeps bringing to our attention and so thank you for being here. And please know that despite the funding challenges that Mercer and Seattle Public Schools face, we remain committed to ensuring that students at Mercer have access to a dual-language Spanish program. The curriculum assessment and instruction team, including Dr. Thad Williams, has been working regularly with Principal Waters and the staff at Mercer to figure out the best way forward for this program. Specifically, we understand that a dual-language best practice is to offer two courses in the language. For example, a Spanish literacy course and social studies in Spanish at each grade level. SPS staff is working with Mercer Administration to problem-solve different approaches to ensure we are able to follow more closely this dual-language best practice, both in the short term and the long term. With respect to the long term, we're also excited to start working with the Mercer community to develop criteria that ensure the dual-language program is prioritizing our English learner families. In addition to being consistent with our goals for racial equity and focus on students of color furthest from educational justice, we believe this approach can also help us provide more sustainable funding for this program. Regardless of the details, there will be a dual-language Spanish program at Mercer in 2021, '22 and it will include a focus on Spanish literacy and opportunities for students to continue developing Spanish language and literacy. We'll continue to work across all of our schools to improve our system-wide approach to dual-language programming to provide more predictability. So just wanted to clear that up so people hear it directly from me. So thank you, President Hampson and Board of Directors.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Juno, for that thorough set of comments. And so I know we have student comments and I believe we are hearing, believe Trayvon was not able to join us, but we are going to hear from Lemmanuel Donaldson, a junior at Rainier Beach High School. Trayvon Mitchell was going to join us. He's a sophomore at Cleveland High School and I hope he'll be able to join us possibly the next time. So these are students from our African-American male achievement student leadership council. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Lemmanuel.
Hi, my name is Lemmanuel Donaldson. I attend Rainier Beach High School where I'm a proud Viking. I currently serve in the AMA and the Student Leadership Council. And I'm also a leading member in the PLUS program. Today I'll be talking about the Student Leadership Council and all the doors is open for me. I chose to be a part of the PLUS program and the Student Leadership Council because inequities aren't adding up in our education system. There's been a huge disproportionality in our resources and outcomes. In 2017, only 40% of Black third graders were proficient in math. In the same year, 78 white third graders were proficient in math. Why is the gap so big? We know there is no such thing as broken children, only broken systems. Why do we continue to blame the children when the obvious problem is the system? Why is the system struggling? More importantly, what can we do to fix the system? Lao Zhu once stated that if you do not change the direction you are going, you may end up where we are headed. Without groups like AMA and the Student Leadership Council, we were headed toward a dark era of generational oppression. SOC gives us a voice and uncovers the truth. Prior to me joining the PLUS program, the name was Secondary Libertarian Pedagogies. Needless to say, doesn't add up to students. We changed it to PLUS because it all has to add up to students first. Our voice matters. My voice matters. When we come together, great things can happen. I'm so proud to be a part of a group that has changed systemic racism. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for those comments. And please feel free to stay and continue to be part of the meeting and make comments at any time. We have now reached the public testimony portion of the agenda. I would. We will be taking public testimony by teleconference today as stated on the agenda. For any speakers watching through SPS TV, please call in now to ensure you are on the phone line when your name is called. Board Procedure 1430 BP provides the rules for testimony and I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I will summarize some important parts of this procedure. First, testimony will be taken today from those individuals called from our public testimony list and, if applicable, the waiting list, which are included on today's agenda posting on the school board website. Only those who are called by name should unmute their phones and only one person should speak at a time. Speakers from the list may cede their time to another person when the listed speaker's name is called. The total amount of time allowed will not exceed two minutes for the combined number of speakers and time will not be restarted after the new speaker begins. In order to maximize opportunities for others to address the board, each speaker is allowed only one speaking slot per meeting. If a speaker cedes time to a later speaker on the testimony list or waiting list, the person to whom time was ceded will not be called to provide testimony again later in the meeting as there is only one speaking slot per person. Those who do not wish to have time ceded to them may decline and retain their place on the testimony or waitlist. Finally, the majority of the speaker's time should be spent on the topic they have indicated they wish to speak about. Ms. Wilson Jones will read off the testimony speakers.
Thank you, President Hampson. A quick logistical note. Speakers, please remain muted until your name is called to provide testimony. When your name is called, please be sure you have unmuted on the device you are calling from and also press star six to unmute on the conference call line. Each speaker will have a two-minute speaking time and a chime will sound when your time is exhausted and the next speaker will then be called. The first speaker on today's testimony list is August P. Diggs.
Good afternoon. My name is August Diggs. I'm an eighth grader at Denny International Middle School and a proud member of the Student Leadership Council of the AMA. Today I will be discussing growth, process, and change. First, I just want to thank you all for having me and thank you all for being a part of this growth and change. You are affecting my life and the future generation positively. Sadly, black lives haven't always mattered in Seattle Public Schools. According to Seattle Public Schools Outcome Data Table, there were 11.4% of African-American males getting suspended compared to the 2.3% of white males in 2014. That's five times the amount. This table is cool and all, but in my eyes, I see everyone as equal. But the sad truth is, there's implicit bias, systemic racism, and oppression, which is why I'm proud to be a part of this Student Leadership Council. We're fighting to change this. We've been a part of the grading policy reform, return-to-school schedule models, and disciplinary action panels and so much more. In the end, I want to feel important. I want teachers to support us in our dreams, to educate us in the classroom and be our friends outside of it, to call us in the classroom instead of kicking us out, to treat us like people instead of continuing this racism. I'm honored to be a part of this movement. Remember, nothing about us without us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Diggs, and again, thank you to Mr. Donaldson as well for both of your inspiring words. Ms. Wilson Jones, the next speaker, please.
Next is Dahlia Gomez. Dahlia Gomez.
Hi.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
International Middle School.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dahlia Gomez. I'm a sixth grade student at Mercer International Middle School. I want to talk to you today because my school has decided to make cuts to the Spanish immersion program next year. The Spanish immersion program is important to me and my family and to a lot of other kids and their families. Having this program is important to me because it is a way for me to be able to practice and learn in my native language, to be around people who are a part of my culture and to be with people that also have the same love for the program as I do. If my school decides to go through with the cuts to the program, it will deny native speakers the opportunity to keep practicing and learning in their native language. If the school makes cuts to the program, it would mean that I would not get as much practice speaking Spanish, my dad's preferred language. This would mean that it would make it harder for me to communicate with him and other members of my family who only speak Spanish. In the future, I hope to be fully bilingual so I can pass on my Mexican heritage and be able to one day give back to my community by being able to help others who prefer or only speak Spanish. Making cuts to the program would hurt me and other students. I wish Mercer would have taken into consideration how this would affect the students and families in the Spanish immersion program. I hope you take this matter seriously and reconsider making these cuts to the Spanish immersion program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dahlia. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Samuel Ivan Mendoza Gilbert. Samuel Ivan Mendoza Gilbert.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Samuel. I am a sixth grader at Mercer International School and I have a few points to make. It has come to my attention that the school will be cutting some of the Spanish immersion classes. This worries me a lot because as a Latinx student, Spanish is part of my identity. If I can't speak Spanish or only know sixth grade level of Spanish, that's like not having part of my identity with me. I identify with Spanish. I don't just speak it. And it is the language of my ancestors. Another thing that worries me is that if we can't take the stamp test when we are in sixth grade and can only take it in seventh and eighth, how are we supposed to learn more Spanish in seventh and eighth to be able to pass the stamp test? Passing the test to be able to get high school credit in middle school is very important. It's very important to me since I want to study engineering and get a degree in mechanical engineering. It is also important to other kids in my grade, I am sure, so that they can get a good job in the future. I have also been studying Spanish in Seattle Public Schools since kindergarten and when I was studying Spanish for these six years, I expected that I would be able to continue studying it through middle school. In fact, that is the reason I came to Mercer. Being in the Spanish immersion class felt like that the school was supporting my identity as a Latinx student. Thank you for listening and I hope you will consider the points I've made.
Thank you, Samuel. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Chris Jackins. Chris Jackins.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the six action items, two points. Number one, I wish to thank Superintendent Denise Juno for her work for Seattle Public Schools. Also, welcome to the new board director. Number two, when the report on the agreement with the SCA was posted last Friday, the report did not discuss the effects on in-person learning. On the resolution for funding Kimball, Northgate, and Vulens, the district wants to demolish these schools and shrink their play areas. Please vote no. On board policy 6220 and three school projects, four points. Number one, at West Woodland, $1 million to get extra new furniture. Number two, at Rainier Beach, $500,000 to add a subconsultant. Number three, at Rising Star, a $500,000 change order for work that has already been performed. Number four, big contractors seem to know that the current board is handing out free money. Number five, but it gets worse. Board review is currently required for amounts above $250,000. But the board is proposing to up the amount to $500,000 and further reduce board oversight. Please vote no. On the Hurst Jones yearbook contract, I encouraged a local, small, minority, and women-owned business to apply and they were ignored. Please vote no. On Jane Adams Field Lighting, a retired city surface water expert testified that the project was in danger, water quality, and Thornton Creek. Please vote no. On the GCCM contract for Rainier Beach, the project would demolish the school. Please vote no. Also, I understand that voters have filed charges to recall the school board from office. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next on the testimony list is Todd Sawicki. Todd Sawicki. Todd Sawicki, if you're on the line, you may need to press star six to unmute. Moving to the next speaker, Manuela Sly. Manuela Sly.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, did I hear?
Hello, can you hear me? This is Todd Sawicki. Sorry, I'm back. I was having difficulty unmuting.
Thank you. So let's go to Todd and then Manuela. Thank you for your patience. We'll come to you next.
My name is Todd Sawicki. I'm a resident of Director Rivera Smith's district and a parent of a Robert Edelstaff Middle School student. I'm responding to recent comments from Director Rankin talking about in-person study hall model for reopenings, grade six through 12. Is that a joke? Is this board actively trying to work with the administration to create an in-person learning environment that is so flawed that students and families just quit the district? It's fine to propose different ideas, but where is the discussion and consideration in this body to share and determine recommendations from the administration? Where is the active questioning from this board in a public and televised forum so all families can witness the models with their pros and cons? How has the remote learning task force not meeting regularly to discuss this and what will happen on April 19th through the end of the year and, of course, next year? If this administration is actively working and discussing this topic, where is the evidence of this and why is the board not requiring presentations and discussions? where is the evidence of this and why is the board not requiring presentations and discussions? And now, of course, what is the model for grades six through 12 in the fall? How is this not a repeated topic? I have read through the February Remote Learning Report, which is buried in a link at the March 6 Retreat Agenda, and there seems to be no specifics on how students are performing. Instead, the report notes the committee's frustration concerning lack of response and support from the administration. Why is the board unable to call this out and demand a response from the administration? Families have to make a choice next year, now given private school enrollment windows. Otherwise, we will be left scrambling in August again this year, wondering if Seattle Public Schools is the right choice for their family. I can say this, if Seattle Public Schools does not offer a five-day-a-week in-person synchronous learning instruction model for next fall to grades six through 12, then this family will be forced to remove our student from SPS. We want to stay in SPS, but the inability of this board to provide an adequate model for those students who cannot or won't learn well remotely is a reality, and it seems like close to half the families in the SPS agree. The board has failed to ensure that the school administration provides adequate educational models for all students. Since in-person schooling has been in state by federal and state public authorities for months, safety is not the issue unless this board, the administration, don't believe in science and data. To date, this board has not required the administration to provide in-person models for those students who cannot or will not be served or will fail to promote education, whether they have disabilities, whether they require parental supervision.
Please consider your remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Manuela Sly. Manuela Sly.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Manuela Sly. I'm president of Seattle Council PTSA and a parent of a student at West Seattle High School. First of all, congratulations, Director Erin Dury. It has been my honor and privilege to work with you in Seattle Council, and I look forward to future collaboration. Regarding incoming Superintendent Brain Jones, I'm pleased to see the starting date has been updated to May 1 to ensure a smooth transition. Seattle Council PTSA stands ready to support Dr. Jones. We face forward. Regarding community concerns about the dual immersion pathway in the South End, I see the rest of my time to former Mercer student, Haeceal Ceja.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Haeceal Ceja, and I went to Mercer Middle School. I was given the chance to be part of the Spanish immersion program for over seven years. This program helped me better my understanding of the Spanish language and helped me be able to speak with my family members in Mexico and El Salvador and solidified my identity and heritage. I was able to be in class with very diverse students. I learned about the Spanish culture around Latino students as well as Black, white, and Asian people. It helped me learn and inspired and motivated me to perfect my Spanish. This program opened many opportunities for me and would likely do the same to other students. I'm in high school now, and I believe being bilingual will open up doors for my future. Please continue the Spanish immersion program for a South Seattle student. Canceling would be a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Robin Reed. Robin Reed.
Hello, my name is Robin Reed. I am the parent of a sixth grader. I am asking that the board and the district begin preparations now to offer the option of full-time in-person instruction for all students in September. This is doable. How do we know? Well, for one thing, school districts, large and small, all over the country are doing it. A new survey reports that half the country's public schools are already open full-time. All public schools in Massachusetts, including Boston, are resuming full-time in-person classes next month. Locally, Lake Washington School District says they'll offer full-time in-person instruction this fall. And we can do it safely. Studies show that when students and teachers wear masks, COVID transmission in schools is very low, considerably lower than in the community at large. For another thing, with universal masking and with the CDC's new evidence-based, science-backed guidelines, we can plan a distance of three feet between students rather than six feet. This is true for elementary-age students under all conditions and for middle and high school students, except when community transmission is very high. For reference, right now in King County, it is not. We have the guidelines. The time to plan is now. Director Hampson, last week you wrote on Twitter, "There is no reopening task force." I was speechless. How is it that we've been out of schools for a year and we're not making plans to go back? How is it that stakeholders in every school haven't been having focused conversations all year about classroom setups and lunch and bathrooms and all the things we have to figure out? This should be the district's priority right now. This is where the work is. The CDC states, quote, "K through 12 schools should be the last settings to close after all other prevention measures in the community have been employed and the first to reopen when they can do so safely." Resuming in-person instruction is critical for supporting students like my son, who are struggling with remote learning. But it's going to take planning to get there, and SPS needs to engage now in that planning. They need to engage families and teachers and principals now to be ready for the fall. We've seen the scramble that followed Governor Inslee's order. Let's not repeat that in the run-up to full-time in-person learning. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Sabrina Burr. Sabrina Burr. Sabrina Burr. Sabrina, if you're on the line, you may need to press star six. Moving to the next speaker, Brian Terry. Brian Terry. Brian Terry. Moving to the next speaker, Noah Zeichner.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, is this Noah?
It is.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Noah Zeichner. I teach Spanish and Social Studies at Ingram High School, and I co-lead the International Schools Leadership Team, which is comprised of teachers representing the 10 international schools in the district. Before Ingram, I taught at Chief South International High School for 13 years. At Chief South, I played a leadership role in establishing the Spanish immersion program. I served on the International Schools Dual Language Immersion Task Force, which completed its work in June 2018. And I was also part of the SCA/FPS Dual Language Immersion Committee that was established as part of the last collective bargaining agreement. I'm speaking to you today because I'm very concerned that Mercer's Spanish immersion program is in grave danger. Next fall, 40 Spanish dual-language students from Beacon Hill and Dearborn Park will arrive to Mercer. They will arrive to discover that the current sixth-grade dual-language teacher was displaced. They will learn that the sixth-grade Spanish immersion social studies class has been cut. They will learn that their new principal might eliminate the Spanish immersion program altogether before they graduate from middle school. Furthermore, there is only one section of Spanish Language Arts that will be offered next year for these 40 students. Seattle Public Schools made a commitment to Beacon Hill and Dearborn Park dual-language students, parents, and teachers that these students will move on to a robust middle-school immersion program with literacy and social studies classes. Additionally, there are many Spanish-speaking ELL students at Mercer, not currently in the program, who should and could have access to dual-language courses. But this is not just about broken commitments. Research, especially the extensive studies by Thomas and Collier, consistently shows that dual-language students begin making big academic gains in both languages after five or six years of a well-implemented DLI program. In other words, the greatest benefits of dual-language show up in middle school. Please do not allow a principal to unilaterally cut this middle-school program without staff or community input. District leadership must find a way to invest in dual-language immersion long-term. Our bilingual students and families deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones? I think Sabrina Burr is on the line, but was having trouble getting unmuted. I don't know if she's on phone or on...
Hello, I'm here.
There we go.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Sabrina, sorry.
Okay. My name is Sabrina Burr. I am a Cleveland High School parent. I've also served with Seattle Council PTSA for over a decade. First of all, I would really like to take this time to thank every last one of our school board members for their service, especially through this very trying time giving of your time and from your family and from the many important things for your life. And I know that everyone has opinions. Yesterday, after I saw one of the black males at Seattle Public Schools fail, I watched the court fail. Then I found out on the recall from Emily Turkins, Jennifer Crowe, and Beverly Goodman. And I know that this costs the district money, and I know that this puts more hardship on you. Six months into Denise Juno's superintendency, I said she did not have the skills for the act. Many people think that the school board has power that they don't have, and I think that people need to understand what the power is the school board has, what state laws that they must abide by. And so, I want to thank Superintendent Juno, but she's made this period far harder than it needs to be. And I welcome, welcome, Dr. Jones to the leadership. And I ask everyone to give this man a chance. He was a strategic person for Seattle Public Schools, and he knows the district well. Stop thinking about what you need and think about what our children need, all of them. The governor's call to back the school because of mental health was racist as heck because Black students have been feeling that far beyond. Now, there's not enough mental health beds for white students. And so, we need to pull together because the truth is, Seattle Public Schools is a family for all students, not just the ones with most privilege and those whose parents were allowed to voice it. The one thing I do want to ask for Seattle Public Schools, we're returning to school for some students after we've been off. Give them the best practices on what they need to do to restore bedtime and all of those things to set our students up for success. Again, to the school board, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you do.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next for testimony is Liz Ann Olson. Liz Ann Olson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Or Liz.
Hello, I'm Liz Olson. I teach dual-language US history and literacy in Spanish at Denny. I'm also here to talk, as many others, about the dual-language cuts at Mercer. I have worked in the middle-school dual-language Spanish immersion program in Seattle since 2006. I began at Hamilton when that program was in its second year and taught there for five years. I then moved to Denny and worked with them as their program was developing as it has focused on following the national research supporting dual-language immersion as the top ELL strategy. As has been typical, more than 95% of my students identify as Latinx. 42% of my current students are identified as ELL, and the vast majority are currently ELL Level 4. The demographic is very similar in the Mercer Spanish ELL program. Dual-language is not a boutique enrichment program, but rather a critical strategy to support our ELL students, maximize the strengths they already have, and treat them as the assets they are to our society. From what I understand from Superintendent Juno's statement earlier, it sounds like Mercer dual-language students might only have one literacy period of Spanish instead of the research-based minimum of two periods in Spanish at the secondary level. This is an unacceptable cut to a program that is designed to close the opportunity gap for our ELL and Latinx students. The program at Denny has two periods for our students. The cuts proposed by the current Mercer principal reduce the program to just one period. This is the same way that she dismantled the dual-language program at Hamilton. Almost all of the Mercer students impacted by this action are heritage Spanish speakers whose Spanish is reinforced at home and are more likely to become bilingual teachers, doctors, and more. Instead of cutting FTE and offering only one section to the incoming 46 graders, Mercer Administration could align with Denny, as we have done, and recruit from the 72 Spanish-speaking ELL students currently at Mercer to fill the program. This current situation also demonstrates why students should have access to ELL programs based on their language and not on school boundaries. This decision was made without including students, staff, and families. The cuts widen the opportunity gap in the community we have promised to serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Cassandra Garcia Stokes. Cassandra Garcia Stokes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello. All right. I want to start out by shouting out to my former student, Haeceal. Hola, Haeceal. Me gustó escuchar de ti. Gracias por venir y hablar. And then I want to say that I am the seventh and eighth-grade Spanish dual-language teacher at Mercer. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge all the committed educators, students, and families that are supporting the Mercer dual-language program. I thank you for your support. But I also want to notice the voices that are not here. 80% of my students come from Spanish-speaking families. Their voices were not given a chance to be heard when cuts were made to our program. And I hope that when you hear my voice, you consider the voices that I represent. Seattle Public Schools made a commitment to offer Spanish at Mercer. An immersion program must have two periods, as mentioned before, to be an effective program. Also, many of my students are heritage speakers, ELL exited. And our program honors their language ability, their culture, and provides opportunity to work on biliteracy skills, in my opinion. This cut should not happen. And I also support a literacy period and a social studies period, especially social studies. I mean, they're both important, but social studies is such an excellent avenue to strengthen the biliteracy skills of our students. I also want to share some successes of our program because I feel like there's a lot of talk about what's not working, but things are working. Since I have been at Mercer, 95% of students reach the language proficiency of intermediate-low or mid, which is the district benchmark for eighth grade, and some students even exceed it. Our students are currently writing poetry with the Jack Straw Cultural Center in Spanish and have touched on themes of racial injustice, sexism, stereotypes, and dreams for their future. I see kids doing amazing things in my classroom, and I ask the school board and the district leadership to support Mercer's dual-language immersion program and prevent the program from being at risk in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tammy Becker Gomez. Tammy Becker Gomez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Tammy Becker Gomez, and I am the parent of a sixth- and eighth-grade Latinx student at Mercer Middle School in the Spanish dual-immersion program. I'm here to speak out against the proposed reductions to the Spanish immersion program at Mercer. Mercer Middle School's Continuous Improvement Plan claims that Mercer will focus on ensuring racial equity, access, address the needs of students of color, allocate resources strategically through a racial equity framework, create culturally responsive environments, and work in partnership with families and communities who represent students of color who are furthest from educational justice. But as we all know, actions speak louder than words, and inaction speaks even louder. Seattle Public Schools and Mercer must demonstrate through action that they are committed to these goals. Cuts to the dual-immersion program are counter to these stated goals. There has been no partnership. The school told parents nothing. No email, no robocall, and certainly not information translated in Spanish, the preferred language of the majority of families in the program. No one asked for input or sought to understand the perspective of families and students. They just took a red pen to the budget where it suited them. And in so doing, their actions said they do not value Latinx families, students, or their education. If the goal is allocating resources strategically through a racial equity framework, they would fund and support programs like dual-immersion that are proven to close the achievement and opportunity gap for students of color. In short, SPS must put their money where their mouth is. There are no changes in the works for the Mandarin immersion program, yet. This is a priority issue. Priorities are reflected by where resources are allocated. If the goal is to create culturally responsive environments, SPS has to support one of its most culturally responsive programs. Dual immersion allows heritage speakers not only to feel welcome and included at school, but it places value on their cultural identity. Principal Waters referred to the dual-immersion program as a boutique program. There is nothing boutique about providing a culturally and linguistically responsive program to students of color. If the goal is to ensure racial equity in our educational system and address the needs of students of color who are furthest from educational justice, appropriate funding will be given to the Spanish dual-immersion program. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Erin Gilbert. Erin Gilbert. Erin Gilbert.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, thanks.
Okay. Hi, I'm the parent of a sixth-grader in the Spanish dual-language program at Mercer who will be directly impacted if the proposed cuts are implemented. I've also taught English and Intercultural Communication at local community colleges as well as Spanish and English courses at the University of Washington. So I speak to you as a parent, community member, and educator, and I'm here today to highlight the crucial role that the Spanish dual-language program plays in the lives of students, particularly Latinx students like my son here in our communities in South Seattle and in the long-term educational outcomes for students who are furthest from educational justice. The SPS Strategic Plan documents a commitment to eliminating opportunity gaps to ensure access and provide excellence in education for every student. Actions that support this goal... Actions that support this goal include creating healthy, supportive, culturally responsive environments, and that is what dual language classrooms do, particularly for the Latinx and Spanish-speaking English language learners in our school community. The most recent assessment data available from SPS, available online on the Assessment Summary Demographic Dashboard, reveals the profound opportunity gap faced by Hispanic and Latinx students at Mercer Middle School. When research has shown us time and time again that dual language programs provide exactly the kind of culturally responsive educational environment that affirms multilingual students and families and is essential to the educational achievement of students who are furthest from educational justice, it doesn't make sense to close those programs. In fact, next year, in addition to another sizable cohort of students who will arrive from Beacon Hill and Dearborn Park, there will already be a large community of Spanish-speaking ELL students at Mercer who would benefit from dual language, um Spanish language arts, and social science classes. Right now, there is such a pressing need for these classes that if anything, more classes should be added. If that need is not apparent, it is due to the lack of communication between the school and families of students who are already in the program or are eligible to join. In fact, at the beginning of this year, many families were stunned to discover that their students, kids who had been in the Spanish Dual Language Program since kindergarten, were suddenly excluded from dual language classes. Oh, um, thank, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Gretchen Sloan. Gretchen Sloan. Gretchen, if you're on the line, you may need to press star six to unmute. Gretchen Sloan. Are you there Gretchen? Gretchen, if your phone number ends in two-five, you may need, oh, you may need to press star six again. Are you there Gretchen? Please make sure you're also unmuted on your phone.
Oh, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Gretchen Sloan. Thank you to all who have put in the arduous work to build the DLI program from the ground up. I'm speaking both as a Mercer parent of a sixth and eighth grader in the Dual Immersion Program at Mercer and also as a high school Spanish and ELL educator at Garfield High School. Thank you to the board for allowing us the space to have our voices heard regarding regarding the sizable significance the Dual Language Program brings to our schools and to our communities. Unfortunately, over many years in SPS, I've seen our Latinx students time and time again shy away from taking Spanish classes in high schools due to their lack of confidence in reading and writing in their native language because so many have not have been given the opportunity to acquire those skills. However, we had just begun to see the outcomes of the first group of students who had progressed with dual language immersion in Seattle Public Elementary and Middle Schools. What we had previously witnessed was starting to take a turn for the better, more native as well as non-native speakers enrolling in higher-level Spanish courses and succeeding. Since heritage speakers make up a considerable percentage of the Mercer International School Program, school, and community, dual language immersion is a pragmatic way to honor those students' heritage cultures and bilingual skills. The program is an excellent way to inclusively close the already disproportionate academic gap and to provide the opportunity to become fully literate in both languages. In addition, this helps to pave the way for all future advantages that bilingual proficiency has to offer, especially in today's increasing global community and economy. Thank you again for having us today.
Thank you.
Next is Kelly Rowland. Kelly Rowland.
Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Kelly Rowland. I teach Spanish at Rayner Beach High School. Rayner Beach was chosen by a previous board to be the DLI pathway for high school in the South End. This decision was made after a community survey where families and involved parties unanimously voted to have the pathway at Cleveland or Franklin. But this is not what I'm here to speak about today. So today I wear my parent hat. I currently have an eighth grader at Mercer in the DLI program and a fifth grader at Hawthorne Elementary. We are a bilingual family and my children are heritage speakers. Because DLI elementary schools are neighborhood schools in the South End, we were unable to secure a spot for our children at Beacon International or Dearborn. However, upon entering sixth grade at Mercer, my older child was given the stamp test and invited into the program. Uh, this year, exiting the program, my child has said she has increased confidence in her ability to communicate with her family in South America and increased pride in her multicultural identity. We were excited for our younger child to have this same experience. However, current boundary changes will send her to Aki. I have petitioned to Cindy Waters and to enrollments. I have had little success and frankly, little confidence in their desire to support the program. I filled out the school choice form. There is no box for us to indicate that our child is a heritage speaker. You can only indicate that your child isn't a heritage speaker if you wish to go to McDonald or Hamilton. Why are North End option schools and South End neighborhood schools for the DLI program? This is marginalizing heritage speakers in the South End. I'm frustrated. SPS needs to step up and leadership needs to step on this. Support this program in the South End. Make it equitable for heritage-speaking families to participate in this program. Maintaining an address-only policy is inequitable and ultimately detrimental to the longevity of this program. We cannot have different sets of rules for the same programs in this district. Make it equitable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
The next speaker is Mary Lanza. Mary Lanza. Mary Lanza. If you are on the line, you need to press star six to unmute your phone. Mary Lanza. Please press star six if you're on the line. Okay, moving to the next speaker, Carrie Taylor. Carrie Taylor. Carrie Taylor. Please press star six if you are on the line. Moving to the next speaker, Kristi Shapcott. Kristi Shapcott.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Kristi Shapcott.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, great. Um, yesterday I was dismayed to see an email from the Spanish immersion teacher at our middle school. She informed us that Mercer Middle School is phasing out one of the two periods currently offered in Spanish beginning next year. There were no discussions and no community outreach about this. In a year that has felt much like the movie Groundhog Day, so too does having to rise to the occasion of contacting school officials and urging them not to make yet another drastic change to the immersion program in the South End. How can you call it an immersion program when the students would have only one of seven periods devoted to engaging in Spanish? How is this fair to students who have invested so much time and energy in learning Spanish throughout their elementary and now middle school years? Don't South End students deserve the same quality immersion program as students in other parts of the city? I implore you to keep the immersion program as is. Please continue to offer students two classes in Spanish so that they can continue to have a full and well-rounded immersion experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
I want to take one more pass-through in case anyone was having trouble unmuting. Um, Brian Terry, are you, are you on the line? Brian Terry. I'm not seeing the phone number that you gave us. Um, how about Mary Lanza? Mary Lanza. Okay, moving to the final speaker then, Carrie Taylor. Carrie Taylor. It looks like, I think I see Carrie Taylor's phone number. Oh, sorry, is somebody unmuted who I called previously?
Hi, yeah, this is Mary Lanza. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mary. Go ahead.
Oh, great, thank you. Sorry for the tech problem. Um, so my name is Mary Lanza. I am the World Language Department Head at Mercer International Middle School. I'm a National Board Certified Teacher. I currently teach sixth grade Intro to World Language at Mercer and eighth grade Spanish 1B. I'm talking on behalf of the elimination of the dual language courses at Mercer because this has a direct impact on the World Language Department. Then, um, the elimination of the sixth grade, there will be an elimination of the sixth grade Spanish and Chinese World Language Intro classes at Mercer next year. Over the years, we have seen the number of seventh and eighth graders in both Spanish and Chinese courses increase. We attribute this to the early exposure in the World Language elective program at Mercer. Without these sixth grade classes, there's a chance that fewer students will enroll in seventh grade classes. World Language credit is a high school requirement and we have had great success at Mercer in getting students enrolled in these high school credit courses. The other courses that will be eliminated are the dual language Spanish immersion classes in grade six and seven. This will have a direct impact on the World Language teachers at Mercer. There will be a reduction of the Spanish teachers at Mercer from three down to two. The expectation will be that these two Spanish teachers will be teaching all the immersion and all the World Language classes. The projected numbers for these Spanish courses will be one Spanish teacher will be teaching 192 students in a day. This is the result of the elimination of the dual language social studies classes, which will permit one teacher to teach both the dual language literacy, sixth and seventh grade classes, plus four eighth grade World Language Spanish classes. This totals over 192 students in one day. Please consider how Mercer can receive funds to specifically fund the immersion program at Mercer so that we can provide enough courses for both our immersion and World Language students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Um, I want to try Carrie Taylor one more time. Carrie Taylor, please press star six to unmute your phone. Are you there Carrie? You may need to unmute on your, um, the device you're calling from as well. Oh, please try star six one more time Carrie. Okay, it looks like you're unmuted if you want to speak. Um, President Hampson, I think we might be having some tech issues. I can see a phone number that, um, for our final speaker, but I am not able to hear them. But it looks like they are unmuted on the conference call line.
Okay, um, and that's Christine?
That's, um, Carrie Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie. Um, so just one more time.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead and speak.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Go ahead, please.
Sorry about that. Yes. Okay, so, um, very quickly, um, this is not my first, this is not my first, um, time going through a Spanish immersion program. We're also in a Spanish immersion program in California. Um, and my experience with that program, um, as I said to one of the, to keep it short, as I said to one of the principals when we left, is that we were never, never able to talk to the district about making the program better because we spent all of our time fighting to make sure that the program just didn't get worse. Um, when we moved here to Seattle 18 months ago, um, we were able to find a spot at Dearborn because we were in the boundary, which was wonderful. And we've loved the school and we've loved the community. Um, my, my oldest graduated last year in the, what would have been the first Spanish cohort from Dearborn, uh, last year. So we're super happy about that. But in the 18 months since we arrived, um, there has been a boundary change at Dearborn, a boundary change at Mercer, and now it looks as though we're dismantling the Spanish program at Mercer. And I'm not going to elaborate why that's a bad idea because many people before me have done so. Um, but I do have a few questions. Once again, we're asking you, after 18 months, not to make it worse, or not to make it worse, even if we're not going to make it better. Um, my question was answered actually, whether it was all middles or just us. But if it's us, why are we losing Spanish at a school that has actual native, um, Spanish speakers and many students that, um, that are furthest from educational justice as opposed to any of the other programs that we were cut? My understanding from the community is that they have been kind of constantly having to defend the program since it's been opened. Um, and what I found out this evening that I didn't know before was the boutique comment from our principal. Um, and if this is a principal that has a history of undermining, um, dual language programs at, um, Hamilton and has this attitude towards dual language, why was this particular principal put in charge of a school that has not one but two dual language programs? That doesn't seem, um, like a supportive move from SPS. Anyways, thank you very much for finally allowing me to speak and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you for continuing to try. Glad we got you on. Thank you. Okay, we've now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Absolutely, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Approval of the consent agenda has been moved by, by Vice President Hershey and seconded by Director Vera Smith. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? See none, all those in, I'm sorry. Does somebody speak up? No?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda has passed unanimously. Okay, we've now come to the Board Committee Report section of the agenda. We'll hear briefly now from the chairs of each of the board's four committees. The chairs will also lead off the discussion for each of our action and introduction items later in the agenda. So comments for those items can be made at that time. We'll also return to general board comments at the end of the agenda. Uh, let's start with Audit and Finance with Director Hershey. Are you ready to provide a committee?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Not too much to report from our last committee meeting. The highlight of the meeting, though, was that we were officially joined by our new public advisor, Mr. Ben Thompson. He comes to us from the county, bringing a wealth of experience, uh, in many facets, and I am really excited to have him on board. He joined us for our first meeting, uh, this past Monday, March the 15th, and already dove in feet-first, uh, with answering and asking, uh, many pertinent questions to the, um, dealings of the district. So we were just really thankful and excited to have him, uh, in our ranks in this capacity and super excited for what expertise he will continue to bring to the table. Um, the next meeting that we will be having, uh, for Audit and Finance is on April the 5th and following that will be May the 10th. And I will save any other additional comments on specific items for the rest of the reports when we move to the action items. Uh, thank you so much. And for those of you who are interested in joining us for our committee meetings, they start bright and early sharp at 7:00 AM. Um, and we hope to see you at the next one if you are so inclined. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Operations Committee, Director DeWolff.
Thank you, President Hampson. Uh, I wanted to, um, mine will be a quick update because we have a lot of my item, excuse me, the Operations Committee items on our agenda tonight. In fact, we have 16 items. Um, and just, uh, our, our next committee meeting is actually next Thursday, so that'd be April 1st at 8:00 AM. And folks can obviously join those meetings, they're public meetings. Uh, we have a bunch of bars coming through, mostly on Vex 3. Uh, and one I wanted to call out was a replacement of some fleet vehicles. That's probably the only thing that's kind of sticks out. And then we'll also be hearing an update on the student and community workforce agreement. Um, so that will be happening at our April 1st meeting. And as I said, I have 16 items tonight for introduction, so I will just wait to make comments on those. Thank you so much.
Okay, and Director Rankin for the, um, Student Support Services Curriculum and Inspection Committee.
Thank you. Yeah, we had our committee meeting last week, our March committee meeting, and, um, was... Yeah, we had our committee meeting last week, our March committee meeting, and was a packed agenda. We had a, an update. It's great to connect with folks from TAF, TAF at Washington, and looking forward to continuing that. That'll be a quarterly update that comes to, to our committee. We are, we talked about dyslexia screeners, that process is going forward, and if you haven't seen emails out there and you're wondering where things are at with dyslexia screeners, some CAI folks are doing a really nice job explaining some of that to community. They've got a PowerPoint and are, are virtually going around the district, meeting with different groups to go through what that will look like for students who, as that rolls out, who will be benefiting from that, so just explaining a little bit about that process. The probably, the most, the most positive thing since the last two weeks is, I think at our last board meeting, I shared that we had been able to select the committee, or select the task force membership for the outdoor community learning, and we had our kickoff meeting last week where we were all able to see each other virtually and, and introduce, get introduced and acquainted and begin this work, and I'm very, very, very just looking forward to that, carrying us through this spring and into the fall. We have an amazing group of educators and community members, parents, community organizations, and with a really, really dedicated focus on, on students, centering students, student need, and thinking about how to support, how to support them and possibilities that are coming out of COVID, but also that can carry us through how students engage with education into the future. So I'm looking forward to continuing that work, and they just have a lot of great wisdom to share with us, and I'm really grateful.
Okay, thank you, Director Rankin, and I will report on the Executive Committee, which just occurred on March 17th. The next committee meeting will be on April 8th, those start at 8:00 a.m. And the committee is made up of myself and Director Hersi and Director Vera Smith. For those that aren't familiar, the Executive Committee is where we set the agendas for our legislative sessions, such as the one today. We have that initial review is, the minutes is usually our first item of approval, so if folks are interested in knowing what's coming up, you want to pay attention to the Executive Committee meetings. And the special attention items that we had this past week included content management system update. We do hear a lot about the extent to which our certain systems that we have are not, are not working, and this is one of those examples where we are aware of, of some of the, the extent that, to which our, our web system, web content management system doesn't work well for us as a system, and so on top of everything else that, that staff are lifting up, that work does continue and continues in, to a great degree. And so we got a great update on that, including the prospects, assuming that, that we have fiscal capacity to have multilingual parts of the site, and that was, that was some pretty exciting presentations by Chief Carrie Campbell, and we always look forward to hearing that because, and I know we're all going to feel really good about that ultimate implementation. And then we talked about our next steps from our board retreat with respect to planning for 2021, '22 school year. We do have that report due to, or that plan due to the Superintendent of Public Instruction on June 1st, and have quite a few follow-up meetings on that coming forward. And talked about our superintendent hiring process. We are about to bring on an interim superintendent and move that date up, and at the same time, we will, will, will be starting to do a long-term approach towards our permanent superintendent hiring processes. That also still needs to happen and expect that to be a, a very long and involved community-driven process. And then we also followed up on our status with our Director for School Board Appointment Process, which has now been completed. Welcome again, Director Dury. And then our usual updates for government relations, which there has been a lot to update us on with respect to what's happening in the state legislature, with the, at the federal level, checking in on our board goals around leadership. We have some really important trainings coming up for the entire board, and thank you to directors for giving lots of your time to participate in those leadership and best practices, trainings and work coming up. And I think especially as we go through these transition, and thank you to staff also who are, are in many cases stepping up to participate in those with us. And with that, we will move on. As I said, April 8th is the next meeting at eight o'clock. And we will move on to action items. The first action item on the agenda is Amendment Number Two to the 2020 to '21 City of Seattle FFVP Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Program Agreement. This came through operations on March 11th for approval. May I have a motion for this item? Vera Smith, can you move that item?
I, yeah, I move that the school board authorize a superintendent to accept the January 2020 through August 2021 City of Seattle grant to expand the fresh fruit and vegetable program grant funding amendment to include an additional $715,402.06 for a total of up to $1,288,927.06. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
This item has been moved by Director Vera Smith and seconded by Director DeWolff. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. Chief Operations Officer Podesta, I believe you will be giving the staff briefing?
Yes, thank you, President Hampson. Seattle Public Schools partners with the City of Seattle on the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Program Grant to provide fresh fruits and fruit in snacks to, as part of student meals in 20 targeted schools during our regular operations. During the past year, this school year where we've been mostly in a remote learning model, as directors are aware, we've introduced many new products and ways of distributing meals and, and food to families and students through a variety of mechanisms, which has really increased the amount of fresh fruits and vegetables we've been able to make available to our students. So really appreciate the support from the city to increase the size of the grant, to continue to provide this level of service through the rest of the school year and as part of the summer program as that begins to take shape. And the city has been a great partner, and this will increase the distribution again. Because of the nature of the way we're distributing meals, this is really available district-wide, and there are new products, so there is an opportunity to distribute more fresh produce and to get financial support from the city to do so. So I'd be happy to take any questions directors might have.
Okay, and I'll start with Chief, Chair of the Operations Committee, Director DeWolff.
Thank you, President Hampson. We had a good discussion in our committee meeting about this, and we sent this up to the board for approval. So I don't have any questions for you at this time, Chief Podesta, but would be happy to also take questions from directors if they have them for either you or myself, but looking forward to supporting this.
Okay, and let's start from the bottom of the order alphabetically by first name, which is with Director Rankin. No questions for me at this time. Director Vera Smith?
Hi, thank you. This seems pretty cut and dry. I don't think anybody can disapprove of having fresh fruits and vegetables in our schools. I guess my only question would be, Chief Podesta, are there any, are there any unintended consequences from this that, that should be noted, anything at all that we should be aware of?
No, not, not really. I mean, there, we'll be able to provide produce in different manners, in different packaging now that it's not just always kind of a snack. It is, it allows students to have access to these foods in their home, which is where a lot of learning has been going on this year. I guess I will add, since it is introduction and action, that we've asked for that because, of course, the sooner we get the funding, the sooner the benefits of this can be made available for the remainder of this school year and through the summer. It, it's a fairly significant increase to the overall side.
Thank you for that, and for the questions.
Hey, just checking in. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Oh, great. Sorry, I don't know, it's my microphone, but I am here.
Okay, thank you. And now we will go to Director Harris.
It's my pleasure to support this, and it's my, also, support dual nutrition teams and Fred Podesta's team making this happen. When folks are economically disadvantaged, and they certainly have been in this pandemic year, and I think that our meal services and meal service deliveries are the stunningly most important, great thing that we have done in this last year, and to make sure that fruits and vegetables are both expanded and encouraged is, is awesome, and I thank the city for those funds. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and now we go actually to Director Dury.
I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Director Hersi?
None for me at this time, thank you. Excited about this.
Okay, I don't have any questions. So with that, I think we can call for the vote, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Vera Smith?
Aye.
Director Dury?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
We will now move to action item number two, renewal of master state elevator maintenance and repair contract. This came through operations on March 11th and is recommended for approval. Director DeWolff?
Do you need a motion?
I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, we have a motion for this.
It's all good. I move that the school board authorize a superintendent to execute the elevator conveyance, maintenance, and repair contract with all tech in the amount of $290,000, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent to implement the contract. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second?
This item has been moved by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Vera Smith. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. Chief Podesta, I believe you'll be briefing us.
Yeah, yes, thank you. We need to have an elevator maintenance contract, obviously, for practical purposes. We have many elevators throughout the more than 100 buildings operated by Seattle Public Schools. This is also a fairly prescribed process in state regulate, in state regulations, were required by the Department of Labor and Industries to have a certain structure of contract, and then also required to select from a roster developed by the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services. These contracts are, the roster is split up geographically across the state. We've chosen for our area vendor that we've had, that holds our cert, current contract, so is familiar with our particular equipment in our buildings, and then also offered the most advantageous pricing. So this is really a renewal of an existing contract that will cover us for the next period. Happy to take any questions.
Director DeWolff?
Thank you, President Hampson. This, as Chief Podesta was mentioning, this one's pretty straightforward. This is a contract for basically our routine maintenance of elevators, lifts, and conveyances in the district, so this is mostly just straightforward requirement, and happy to support this, and thanks for the work bringing this for Chief Podesta, so turning that over to you, President Hampson.
Thank you. Questions from you, Director Hersi?
No questions for me at this time, thank you.
Director Dury?
No questions, thank you.
Director Harris?
A couple of questions for Chief Podesta, if I might. Why is this intro and action at the same time? And did we send out another RFP? And my comment is that our first duty is not to educate our children in faith, and I appreciate elevator maintenance. Thank you.
I'll be honest, thank you for the questions, Director Harris. I'll be honest, that we are just bumping up against a deadline as we are reopening buildings. Our facility operations folks who manage these relationships are just pulled every which way from Sunday, and we're just a little slow getting this into the process, which is why we're trying to get this approved before any current contracting expires. The competitive process for this is actually managed by the state, the Washington Department of Enterprise Services, and that gives us a roster to choose from. We made an internal selection again based on pricing and qualifications, mostly being that, there, in our geographic area of the Ross, offer the best pricing and has a good track record providing service to the district and is familiar with our particular equipment.
I guess then that I would follow up with a request to senior staff that if it's intro and action, you can tell us why it is intro and action so we don't have to push back and question. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Director? I can't remember. Director Rankin? No, sorry, Director Vera Smith?
That's okay. I actually don't have any questions or comments right now. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I got caught up on the SZ in the names. Director Rankin?
I know, Lisa Eliza Rankin Rivera. Easy to, easy to mix up. I, I don't have any questions. I, being trapped in an elevator is one of my irrational fears, along with being lost in space, and being trapped in an elevator is more likely to happen, so maintenance is a good thing.
Great, yeah, well, we can add to the things we now know about Director Rankin, and, and I will add to that my belief that the elevator and escalator companies have a, that there's a conspiracy to keep all of those not working particularly well so that their maintenance contracts are, are well-supported. But that said, I have no particularly articulate or specific questions on this needed action at this time, so thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Director Vera Smith?
Aye.
Director Dury?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
We will now move to action item number three, establishing May 1st, 2021 as the start date for interim superintendent Dr. Brent Jones and authorizing the execution of a mutual early separation agreement with Superintendent Denise Geno. May I have a motion for this item?
Absolutely. I move that the school-
I move that the school board, A, establish May 1st, 2021, as the start date for Dr. Brent Jones as interim superintendent for the district, on the terms and conditions contained in the interim superintendent's employee agreement dated March 1st, 2021. B, authorize Dr. Jones to employ Superintendent Juno as an hourly employee between May 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2021, at per diem rate set in her April 25th, 2018 employment agreement. And C, authorize the board president and chief legal counsel to execute the mutual early separation agreement as attached to this board action report with Superintendent Juno. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
The item has been moved by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. This item did not go to committee, and I will be introducing the item. And I will also ask Chief Narver to provide some additional context after I've finished my comments. More than comments, I want to express my gratitude to Superintendent Juno and to incoming interim superintendent Dr. Brent Jones for their flexibility and openness and collegiality in working through this process to ensure a smooth transition, the timing of this transition. It's a really difficult time to be going through this transition, and I really couldn't be more grateful for their willingness to come to a mutual agreement about what worked for all parties involved and is in the best interest of the school district. So my gratitude to them, and that this is happening with really very little cost to the district, and we certainly have Superintendent Juno to thank for that. So I want to then pass it off to Chief Narver, if you have anything to add to that, before I go to questions.
I'd be happy to. Good afternoon, Greg Narver, Chief Legal Counsel. Welcome to Director Dury. I look forward to working with a fellow Salmon Bay parent. Also on the line is Deputy Chief Legal Counsel John Cirque, who worked on this matter as well. On February 24th, the board approved the hiring of Dr. Brent Jones as interim superintendent and approved the terms of his employment agreement. At that time, the anticipated start date for Dr. Jones was July 1st, but as it happens, he is available to start work on May 1st, and Superintendent Juno has agreed to this early transition. The terms of that are set forth in the bar and in the attached agreement. This is up for intro and action, and I'll answer the question, why? Dr. Jones, he needs to know if he's starting on May 1st, so that he can plan for that transition and be ready to take the reins of the superintendent's job on that date. That about sums it up, but Mr. Cirque and I would be happy to answer any questions, if there are any, about the terms of the agreement or the change to Dr. Jones's start date.
Okay, we'll start with Director Rankin for questions, comments?
My question is not about the start date, but about the hourly, is that just like on an as-needed basis, kind of for consultation as the, beyond the transition period?
Correct, that's exactly for that, consultation on helping on the transition.
And does the board need to, I mean, approval of this would allow that to happen at the behest of Dr. Jones and Superintendent Juno as however that becomes necessary?
It's a preauthorization for this limited period of time for Dr. Jones to engage Superintendent Juno as a consultant on an as-needed basis, correct?
Okay. I don't have any other questions, thanks.
Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. No questions per se. I do want to join in thanking Superintendent Juno for her three years of service in our district and all the energy and passion she put into there. And I also welcome Dr. Jones. Thank you.
And Director Harris?
Thank you, no questions but comments, if I could, please. I think it's important to mention that we retain third-party counsel, former state Supreme Court Justice Phil Talmadge, to assist us in that, to avoid any appearance of any conflicts of interest. I think it's important to mention that the article that came out in the Seattle Times suggested that Superintendent Juno is going to get $300,000, which if she wanted to push back, she might have gotten that if we had entered into a very adversarial relationship, and we did not. That is not what this bar says, and I appreciate Superintendent Juno's elegance, frankly, in not pushing litigation or any other issues. And my hope is, is that the 15 days that's included in this bar for collaboration between Superintendent Juno and Dr. Brent Jones is rich and powerful and an elegant handoff. And as I have said before, I promise Dr. Brent Jones my very best efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dury. I'm sorry, Director Dury?
I have no questions at this time, just this quick comment. I also want to thank Superintendent Juno and Dr. Jones for engaging in this process and allowing a longer runway to get Dr. Jones in place for a successful summer and upcoming school year.
Director Hersi?
No comments from, excuse me, no questions from me, just again, thanking Superintendent Juno for her work and service to the district up until this point. I think this move is going to be critical for us to give as much runway and as much opportunity for Dr. Jones to orient himself to the role in order to make sure that we are not only setting ourselves up for success during our last few weeks of school this year, but also, more importantly, planning for, you know, the services that we plan on offering during the summer, as well as a strong start in the fall of next year. So I'm just super excited that this is moving forward. I'm incredibly thankful for all of the parties involved. This is no easy feat. A transition takes a ton of time, and the fact that things have been going so well so far between Superintendent Juno and Dr. Jones is a clear sign that we are headed in the right direction. So again, thanks all around, excited to move this forward.
Director DeWolfe?
Thank you, President Hampson. Just want to reiterate gratitude to Superintendent Juno, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness around making sure this transition is really thoughtful. I guess I'm overusing that word, but I really do appreciate that we rolled this back to May 1st. I think it'll really set Dr. Brent Jones up really well for the upcoming school year. So grateful to see this. Thank you for your work on this, President Hampson, and Chief Counsel Narver, I know a lot of work we don't see on the dais, and so we appreciate all the work that you put in behind the scenes. Thank you for that.
And John Cirque as well, and Phil Talmadge, and the folks that supported Superintendent Juno and her side, and definitely gratitude to her attorney as well. So with that, Ms. Wilson Jones, will you call for the vote?
Director Dury?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
We will now move to action item number four, approval of addendum to the August 2020 memorandum of understanding, otherwise known as an MOU, between the Seattle School District, number one, and Seattle Education Association. May I have a motion for this item?
Absolutely. I move that the school board approve the addendum to the August 2020 MOU as attached to this board action report, which will become effective upon ratification by SEA on March 26, 2021. I further move that the school board waive the provision of policy number 1420, that board action reports and relevant supplementary information will be posted to the district's website at least three days in advance of board meetings. This action authorizes the superintendent to take all necessary steps to implement the district's responsibilities detailed in the addendum. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
This item has been moved by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. This item did not go to committee. Chief Human Resources Officer Dr. Clovercott, I believe you will be giving the staff briefing.
Yes, thank you, good evening. So what you have before you is an addendum to the memorandum of understanding that was agreed to with the Seattle Education Association and approved by you in August of 2020. This addendum outlines a phased-in approach to restoring in-person services for preschool through 5th grade students and for pre-K through 12th grade students receiving services through special education intensive service pathways. The addendum contains provisions in the following main areas: informed decision-making and supportive communication, health and safety, instructional model for the PK through 5 and PK through 12 special education intensive service pathways, leads and accommodations, workload, educator expectations, and evaluation. The fiscal impact to this board action report is approximately $5.8 million. We did do two different racial equity analysis throughout bargaining with SEA this past winter, one on our proposals and one on the budget. Staff have already actually started working under the terms of this agreement this past Monday, March 22nd, with the three days of training that are needed in order to prepare staff to support students who will be returning on March 29th. And with that, I think I will open it up for questions.
Thank you. Let's go, starting with Director Hersi, from the top of the order.
Thank you very much. The only question I have is that, just for the public's sake, could we give a little bit of what could potentially happen if SEA does not ratify the agreement? I've gotten that question several times over the past couple of weeks, and just from the district's perspective, it would be good to provide some roadmapping in the event that that were to occur, just so that our constituents have as much information as possible.
Sure. So if SEA were not able to get the votes in order to ratify this agreement, which we understand we will have that information by Friday evening, the bargaining teams would go back to the negotiations table, we would continue to bargain in good faith, of course, so that we can get to a new tentative agreement that would then be brought back to the membership for a vote. If that were to happen, we would not be able to start school on Monday, the 29th, for the students outlined in this board action report, and that would be pushed off to April 5th, which would then be under the governor's executive order. So we are hopeful that this will pass. The vote, I believe, started yesterday and runs through Friday, and we will let you and the public know as soon as we have any more information about that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Director Harris? I'm sorry, Director Dury?
Hi. Given how new I am and how much depth and process this decision has, I do have lots of questions, but I feel that this might not be the time to take them up and will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Director Dury. Did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
Not at this time.
Okay, thanks. Director Harris?
First, let me start by thanking all of our teachers who are beyond heroes in my book, and thanking both sets of bargaining committees, both from SDS and from SEA. I do have a concern about the fact that we're taking apparently four nurses away from school duties to work on administrative issues, but I also understand that there was, in fact, an SEA nurse representative at the bargaining table. And social media being what it is, I don't know the veracity of what is being printed out there, but I would suggest that we don't have enough nurses, our prototypical model is not funded, and that comes to the fore right now, right here. And I hope we all communicate better in the future, and certainly hope we all communicate better in the future for MOUs, for 6th through 12th MOUs that are being bargained as we speak. But huge gratitude to the folks that gave up their weekends, that gave up their nights, that have been working round the clock to make this happen. And there is no way that everyone will be satisfied, but it's my hope that we can move past this and do an even better job on 6th through 12th, and we can get started the day that that one is signed, hopefully, on next fall's contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris, and I believe Chief Bergy would like to speak to the four additional nurses that we actually have provided. There's some misinformation on social media. Chief Bergy?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I'll just give you a little bit of background. You know, a lot of the staffing has been confusing this year because we did come into the overstaff, so let me just say this. We hired a new manager position, which was a new position specifically for COVID. That was Carrie Nicholson's position. Many of you are familiar with her work. So we did add a position there for overall COVID work, and in particular, health and science nursing. We were overstaffed by two FTE this year. Those positions weren't eliminated, we're carrying those this year, and we've committed to carrying them next year as well, even with the lower enrollment projection. And then Dr. Petrosa's team had done some additional substitute nursing commitments, so additional staffing of about three FTE were garnered through those, some dollars that she had available to hire some additional substitute nurses. Nurses aren't easy to find, right? They're not easy for us to find, but we did provide some additional supports.
Anything else, Director Harris, in response to that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Director Rivera Smith?
Hi, thank you. I, this has been, I know, first I'll just say thank you. I know it's been a long process here, both for our SPS negotiators and the SEA negotiators, and it's had to be expedited to an extent because of the governor's orders, so thank you for all the work done there. I know that no plan is perfect, so there's going to be a lot of questioning and criticism of this MOU, so we're going to have to stand strong in that. I know that educators are still voting on it, and so we'll all wait their decision too on this. But I, and I will just, I think I'll just ask, it's more of an expectation and question, but in the summary, Chief Cod has here that under steps to address disproportionate school closure impacts, that when the district COVID central team concludes a school has or will be more heavily impacted by school closures, additional and appropriate plans of support will be provided and applied. I'm wondering, I hope that that would happen before the school actually opens, so that those things can be in place, and I guess just my question is, is that the plan?
That's my understanding, Director Rivera Smith. I mean, a lot of this outlines that what we will have to do, and those are our intentions, and so exactly how we will be responding when we do the racial equity analysis has not been determined, just that we will.
Thank you. Is there a specific tool being developed for these, for these schools? Or are we using the one that we have already?
We actually have a racial equity analysis tool during COVID that the SPS team had been working on. Somebody else on this call, either Chief Scarlett or Chief Petrosa, might be able to speak more to that tool. But that is the tool that we'll be using and have used throughout this bargaining process.
Wonderful, thank you. Yeah, I don't have any other questions or comments right now. Thank you so much.
Director Rankin?
Thank you. I, I don't have questions, I have comments. The, just to reiterate for folks listening, the timing seems funny that we're approving this before it's been ratified. And just to, I guess, reemphasize that it's, if ratified, it's approved. And that the voting is still open until Friday. And that just has to do with the way that the timing worked out with the order and how quickly things can move through the full board and the full membership and all of that. Something that I want to, or something that I have noticed in relationship to this item that I want us to think about in relationship to the future is that there's a lot of misunderstanding about what a bargaining agreement means and how this works and where the different decision-making points are. And so, so I will just say that I really hope that between this process and the process for fall, we'll have more opportunity to discuss as a full district community, where our different levers of influence are and how, you know, that this is, this is protection for teachers. This is work, job, job protection, work site protection and benefits. But because of the timing of all these various decisions, there's a lot of instructional model kind of tied up in that. And as one of our public comment speakers noted, you know, deciding the instructional model and thinking about, you know, what we want school to look like in the fall really does need to be that full community discussion. And we don't have, you know, the luxury of a huge amount of time, but there will be time between, between the kind of closing out on these agreements for the remainder of this school year and going into discussions about fall. But I'm just really looking forward to us kind of all coming back to that as educators, as families, as students, as staff and board and getting out of the sort of adversarial viewpoint and coming back together around the needs of students as a, as a community that is separate from the very necessary agreement between the the district and the union in, to provide labor production. So, yeah. I guess that is all for me.
Director Rankin, I might just add, if I may, Director, President Hampson. So one of the reasons why this, the timing of this is just less than ideal, I guess I'll say, is that staff who are going to be educating the students who show up on Monday, the 29th, they actually started working under these agreements on this Monday, March 22nd, so two days ago. So they've kind of, in good faith, been working under what's already been outlined in the tentative agreement. So timing is definitely not ideal. We do understand that if it does not pass this Friday, we will need to go back to the bargaining table and figure out what we need to do to get to a yes. And the other thing I'll just say, you know, to you all in the public is that for 100 years, we've had one instructional model in public education. And then all of a sudden, we were forced, because of a worldwide pandemic, to change that model. And our educators did heroic work to try to figure out, and I mean, our principals, our support staff, our nutrition services staff, our teachers, our everybody, really, under very unusual and extreme circumstances, had to figure out a different kind of a model, a different way of educating. And this MOU and the addendum to the MOU is still part of that. We bargained in a pandemic. We're still trying to figure out what does a hybrid model of instruction look like in a pandemic. There was no roadmap for this. Nobody had it figured out. I do believe that whatever we come up with in the fall will be much better. But I'm very proud of the work that our educators and our school leaders and our central office team have done over the past year to bring us to this point. And I also want to thank the bargaining teams because they put in hundreds of hours to try to get to this point.
Absolutely, thank you. I meant to add my gratitude to both bargaining teams or multiple bargaining teams for all the time and effort in super high-pressure situations. So thanks to everybody for putting in that work.
Okay, so just a couple of comments from me. I do want to state, I don't see, we have a shockingly small audience, actually, it appears. So maybe folks are, will be watching later, that this is the culmination of a lot of work. And it is the culmination of work that was headed in one direction and then had to, had to. I do see your hand, Director DeWolf, because I may have skipped you. Is that what you're saying? I skipped you?
You did.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I keep messing up on your order because of the whole ops thing. So I will come back to you after I make my comments. That this, the board is, has closed session discussions about bargaining with, with staff as we go through the process. And so we, we have, this is one of the few areas where we do have discussions because of the nature of bargaining that is in closed session with staff on an ongoing basis. And staff has done a great job keeping us apprised throughout this. And the closeness to which we were with our originally proposed in-person return, which did not, had all students through fifth grade returning, did not have all six through 12 students returning for this year. That shift was a massive one. And so it's amazing that we were able to get to an agreement. And, and I know that this, the members of this board were very grateful when we were able to get to that moment. So there's not a lot that is new under the sun with what we're seeing here today. The timing, as folks have said, is difficult. There are many things in this agreement that any one of us as a staff, board, educator, parent, student can take issue with. And, and yet, it is, it is the ability to get to this agreement that allows us to move forward, which is obviously critical at this time for K through five. So there's no, there's nothing for us to sort of, you know, dive in deeply to because that's all been determined. And we need to honor the place that the bargaining teams got to, honor their contributions, honor their work. It was incredibly difficult for them to get to this place. We are known as a district that has processes on top of processes and processes to discuss those processes. And, and so we do, that creates a longer process. And I would like that we could move to a place where, where we don't have that and that lengthy sets of processes and that will take breaking down of silos and creating better communication. And I believe that we're all committed to moving in that direction. But we are who we are in this moment in time. And so coming to this place is really a huge accomplishment. And with that, I will be supporting this wholeheartedly. And I hope folks in the community are able to make peace with it and, and flex in the ways that we all need to, to make sure that this happens for our kids. And I, we're all super excited about kids coming back on Monday, the 29th. And now I will turn to Director DeWolf to let him add a final comment. Oh, one last thing. Chief Cott, could you please state that the fiscal cost, and this is something that I want to see in a press release, when we approve this? That, how much is this costing us?
$5.8 million, so $5,875,465 as an approximation put out by our budget, Chief Burgi.
And that goes toward, if you could just give me a short list of the top items?
So I believe it's seven days of COVID leaves. We've got extra time for professional development for substitutes. Chief Burgi, you did the analysis. You might have the Excel spreadsheet in front of you.
I do.
Another seven days is a big part of it.
Yeah, so we had substitutes, training for substitutes. We had the building safety team stipend. We have the, well, we have MRF filters, but we didn't include that. We did have to order another bunch of HEPA air filters for this. There's more translations and comm support. And then there's also the benefits that we put in. So Chief Cott talked about the seven days of emergency circumstance paid leave. And then we also have quarantine leave. And so we did estimates on a certain percentage of SEA needing to access those benefits.
Thank you. And I just want to note that these agreements were made and these costs arrived and the, the, that dollar amount arrived in spite of having absolutely no assurance that, that we would have support from the state or that the governor would ultimately be allowing monies from the feds to come through. We have seen the state already supplant both enrollment stabilization dollars and transportation dollars. And so that they managed to get to this point in spite of not knowing that we were going to have support from the state to actually pay for the things for which we were bargaining is a, is a huge task. And it's not a dynamic that I would hope I would ever see this state repeat again, where they withhold funds as a stick approach to, to getting us to an agreement, which makes it, I believe, much more difficult for you all to bargain when you don't even know if you can pay for the things that you're trying to provide to our educators. Okay, Director DeWolf, thank you for that summary. Director DeWolf?
Thank you, President Hampson. Appreciate having a moment here. I wanted to just quickly ask Dr. Cott if you could just share, and one of the big sticking points was around kind of our, our school facilities. And I know, if you could just briefly remind folks the process that you went through to bring in kind of a cohort of folks to do walkthroughs, just to clarify kind of one of the issues that I think was out in the news for a bit about one of the sticking points, but the process.
Sure. And actually, Chief Podesta and Chief Burgi would probably have more details around that. But we did ask Labor and Industries to come in and walk through our buildings jointly with leaders from Seattle Education Association and leaders from the central office in Seattle Public Schools to look at the health and safety protocols and guidelines that we have in place, look at some of our HVAC, to make sure that people felt more confident. When we said we had things in place and we're meeting the, the health and safety guidelines, we wanted to be able to bring more confidence to our labor partners and our public in being able to say that by having an external organization come in and sort of verify, if you will, that what we were saying is, is actually what we were doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that was one of the biggest sticking points. And so appreciate the work to bring it, pull that together, to bring some assurance and some comfort to our educators. I know it's a scary thing to think about coming back after a long year of COVID. We were in our homes, we were locked down, we were in quarantine. So, you know, a lot of these activities that we want to think are normal, you know, we have to adjust our thinking around that. And so I really just want to give you gratitude, big ups to you and SPS and SEA on the bargaining teams on this. And just as a small note, I think to our community, you know, we've been getting notes about one of the conversations we're going to have about start times and transportation and the MOU and the current instructional model. And we're still in the thick of this pandemic. Case is up 30% here in Seattle, 18% in King County, variants are still out there, not everybody's getting vaccinated. And I don't know how many people really want to get vaccinated. I myself do support it. So I think the idea, I'm going to go back to normal. I just want to help people understand, I hope people understand, that normal is not something we're necessarily working towards. Right now, I think we're just working towards finding some, some ways to, to bring back experiences that we had, whether it's in person or online. But at the end of the day, this looks and feels different. And we have to be comfortable, we have to be resilient, we have to be flexible and agile to difference. Things are going to feel weird. And I'm honestly just going to call on all of us adults to stop projecting our stress and our anxiety on to our young people. And for young people, I just want to say this. You are already enough, you are already valued, you're already loved, you are more than a grade, you're more than a test score, you're more than grades, your GAs, your S's. You are not behind, you have not fallen down, you don't have learning loss, you aren't less than, you're perfect as you are. This is not a course race. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I'm excited to, you know, take this opportunity to do something different with our education system by this hybrid model and bringing back students in person. I hold and I trust that we'll be able to do it safely and appreciate all the work that's gone into this. This is not an easy conversation. This is not easy bargaining. This is not an easy issue. And I just really ask our community to hold close to yourself that this is a conversation and a topic that we're all going through together at the same time as you. And so just to come together and understand this with grace and we hear you and we feel you and we understand where you're coming from. And I'll just end with that, but thank you to all the work that's gone into this.
Thank you, Director DeWolf. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Some inspiring words. Ms. Wilson Jones, will you call for the vote? Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hershey?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Dury?
Abstaining.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Motion has passed by a vote of six yes to one abstention. Okay, the excitement continues. We will now move to action item number five, approval of a revised, of revised bell times for elementary and K-8 schools for the remainder of the 2020 to 21 school year. May I have a motion for this item?
Absolutely. I move that the school board approve the revised bell times for elementary and K-8 schools listed in the background section of this board action report. These changes will take effect on March 29, 2021, and will remain in effect for the remainder of the 2020-21 school year. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
This item has been moved by Vice President Hershey and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. This item did not go to committee. Chief Podesta, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, President Hampson. So school bell times, and for anyone listening or is not familiar exactly with that term, really just means the start and end of the school day at a particular school building are adopted, established annually by the board when the board adopts our transportation service standards, which describes which students are eligible for district-provided transportation. And in recent years, the district has operated with a two-tiered system of bell times, wherein many schools have a start of their day at 7:55, have had a start of their day at 7:55, and many others at 8:55, and then a few at 8:45, actually. And this split between these tiers is not perfectly uniform, but it's largely that elementary schools start at the seven, have started the 7:55 hour and secondary schools at the 8:55 hour. And the point of this and why they're established with the transportation service standards are this allows us to make efficient use of our transportation resources, in particular, our yellow bus fleet. This allows a set of buses to provide transportation to school in the morning and have students arrive in time for a 7:55 start time. And the same set of buses be turned around to provide transportation to another set of students at other schools at 8:55. As we went into the, and this system was originally adopted by the board in March of last year for this coming school system, somewhat along our normal standards, was then revised once it was, we moved to a remote model, still with a two-tier was then revised once it was, we moved to a remote model, still with a two-tiered system, but with the times closer together, an eight o'clock start time for elementary schools and a nine o'clock start time for secondary schools, thinking that this would be easier for schools to manage and for families to manage if they had students in, in both types of schools that the school, it was closer together and the overall school day would overlap, you know, into, you know, more succinct timeframe. Now that we're trying to welcome more students back into our buildings, we really need to return to our usual practice of having an hour between the bell times as we try to transport more students to our schools so we can make the same use of that fleet. Because if we bring back more students, as per the governor's order, we are going to need to use the complete fleet of yellow school buses we have. And that only worked on any year because of the multiple-tiered bell time. So we've had discussions also that right now we are ramping up transportation and we have driver shortages and, and we have some capacity issues. But even if we were full force, we would need to do this because this is, this is the underlying basis for the system. So this action, again, moves the elementary bell times, starts them earlier, the start of the day and the end of the school day both are half an hour earlier than we had in the remote model. So elementary schools and K-8 schools start at 8:00 AM and end at 2:30 and makes no changes to the secondary bell times at this time, that they would still have a nine o'clock start. And that gives us the separation that we need that so we can make more efficient use of the yellow school buses that are available to us. Implementing this in, by March 29th, as we think through welcoming students with in intensive special education pathways, preschool students, head start students and, and others, we'll need this in place now. And this efficiency, we are still in the middle of routing all these students, so it's hard to give exact numbers. We expect this to yield at least 40 buses into the pool to allow us just to meet the, the transportation needs that we'll have on March 29th and on April 5th for, again, special education pathways, preschool, McKinny Bento, students with a 504 accommodation and our first priority of students that we're transporting and we're legally obligated to transport. And we're hoping as we continue to run the system efficiently, as we bring more yellow school buses online, perhaps we can offer more transportation. But even to meet the obligations that, you know, we've already got in place, we need to have more time to, again, between start times and end times for bringing students to school and transporting students from school back to, to home. So that's, you know, we're really just returning to our normal practice and modeling. Again, it's around, it's the top of the hour as opposed to 7:55 and 8:55. But basically, this returns roughly to the model that we've had for in-person instruction for the past several years. A few years ago, the district actually went from a three-tiered system to a two-tiered system. And this returns us to that. And, you know, will make, make us able to meet the transportation obligations that we have right now over the next couple of weeks. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions directors have.
Okay, we'll start with you, Director DeWolfe.
Thank you, Chief Podesta. I think my question is just around the student benefit. Can you describe more about the student benefit?
Again, I think this, you know, it allows us to provide transportation, in this case, as with the resources we have, per our transportation service standards and to those that were legally obligated to. There are frankly only so many yellow school buses available to us. And if each bus can only make one, serve one school, you know, one route a day, you know, we would need to practically double the bus fleet to, to serve all students. Last year, when stu, while students were still in buildings, we fielded 205 buses per day to serve special services students. And that's about where we are now. We have a few more available to us than that. But we, again, just to meet the transportation needs of, of students, we need to frankly recycle a bus each day that it can make, it can transport two sets of students. But we just, with the equipment and the staffing we have, we can't get students to 105 schools all at the same time, is what it comes down to. So you need to split those destinations in half. So we, and you need some time in between that to serve the other set of routes. It's really just managing kind of the peak load of our resources.
Okay, thank you so much, Chief Podesta. That's very helpful. My only other question, not a question, more just a comment. You know, last month, we passed our 100% clean energy resolution. So just always, always want to put a, a flag or promote electric school buses whenever we talk about school buses. So just doing my due diligence, due diligence to remind us of that. So, thank you.
I, I appreciate that. I think e, even, you know, depending on capacity and utilization, even a diesel school bus can be, have a lower carbon footprint than the equivalent number of students each being transported in a single occupancy vehicle. So there, there's some efficiency to be gained by, we essentially operate a little transit system and we all know that transit systems can create energy efficiencies. But, but we certainly agree, we would like our buses themselves to, to be cleaner than they are.
Anything else, Director DeWolfe?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so let's go now with Director Rankin.
I feel like no matter what order you go in, I'm always surprised when it's my turn. So, yeah, this really, we've had some people ask, you know, why couldn't we move the afternoon block later? And I, I hope it's understood that it's not the time between the morning block and the afternoon block, that it's actually the time between the two bell times in the morning. And this is the same issue that we have with transportation, have had before. You may notice that my committee is the only, is the one that still meets at 4:30 in the afternoon. Other committees meet at 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock in the morning, that I'm not a morning person. And, you know, people have different kind of sleep, sleep patterns. Mine and one of my kids happens to not sync with the most of the rest of the world. That being said, you know, even though my, my initial response was like, oh no, another change, it, it really is critical that in the context of what we're being directed to provide by the governor, that the accessibility for more students is, is the critical thing. And I know there are a lot of people asking questions about working families and the half-day schedule and the bell times and all of that. And as Director Hampson said earlier in relation to the tentative agreement, there was a lot of planning that had been done in terms of the broad, you know, safety protocols and procedures, transportation protocols and procedures on the, on the, on the big scale. But to actually operationalize different pieces of that plan, the board directive was a roll-up by groups. And what is very different about having to shift to respond to the governor's order to bring everybody back at the same time is that first student laid off drivers in October when it was clear that remote was going to be the primary, excuse me, the primary educational model for the fall. So we have to, and, and those drivers all couldn't sit around until, you know, there's another job available for them. So the amount of time that it takes to train, to find, hire and train drivers and to build these routes based upon responses from families is, is why there's not clear answers right now for families if you are going to have transportation or not. I just, I hope that that's, that's understood. And also in terms of working families, again, that we don't have a lot of great options, but we have to make choices every step of the way along this. And we're trying to make the best that we can. So given that, that is leading to the, the change in the bell times. I want to add too that we are having a broader discussion about transportation that was scheduled to happen anyway, to relook at how we can serve more students and fit within the budget. Because as with other things, the state does not actually cover the cost of, of transportation fully. But can I, so just to ask a question, in terms of moving the times later, can somebody, I guess, just quickly respond to why? Or it's, I mean, it's really that the eight o'clock time is basically a return to what we had, what we had before as opposed to creating a new timing structure. Is that accurate?
I would say there were three factors, and I would invite any of my colleagues to chime in if there are other things that should be considered, that it seemed logical to return to our practice of roughly eight o'clock and nine, you know, nine o'clock to, to be kind of where the bell times have traditionally been. Moving the secondary bell times would have added another variable into bargaining that's going on right now about the secondary model that, you know, isn't, wasn't crystal clear how that was going to end up. And then the district is, and I think many families are very appreciative, trying to bring back athletics as much as possible and, you know, shifting the ending bell times for secondary schools later in the day would create yet another hurdle for that. And so those were three things. But I think primarily it was, we're trying to come back to school the way we operated and that's what this looks like, is there's a tier at roughly eight o'clock and there's a tier roughly at nine o'clock. That's, that's the way we traditionally operated. So returning to that made some sense.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Vera Smith?
Thank you. My, I had a question that I was, I was just hoping to answer because we had heard from a lot of committee asking why we did not, or if we did consider moving secondary up an hour to make that hour time between the two. So thank you for covering that. I will just explain to everybody listening that, you know, this, this item's coming to us, as you can see on the bar, so it didn't go to committee. And, and interaction items are kind of difficult because they, the disadvantage to them is that we don't have time for more conversations or engagement on them. Typically, items go into a committee where they're discussed possibly for more than a month. Then they move into, to the full board for introduction and then a few weeks later for action. So this is definitely a condensed timeframe because it is that we are meaning to do that. So I'm just explaining to people how unfortunately, because of the interaction nature of this one, we didn't get a chance to speak with more communities about any kind of implications that this will have. But I, I know that it was still, you know, there was a lot of thought gone into it. And thank you, Chief Podesta, again, for explaining the implications that would have been had we moved secondary. It is an adjustment that families are going to be asked to make and that's hard. That's always hard. So we definitely sympathize with that. I likewise am not a morning person, Director Rankin. So I, I appreciate that you have not moved your meetings to 7:00 AM. And I, but my kids actually are morning people, so hopefully the adjustment won't be too hard for them if they do return first. We haven't even made that decision yet. So thank you for the work on this and for, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Harris?
Several questions and a few comments. Chief Podesta, you mentioned 100, hello? Chief Podesta, you mentioned 105 schools at the same time. That, we're not talking about high schools. They have ORCA passes, correct?
They, there are a lot of high school students that do have ORCA passes. We do provide special education transportation to nearly, to many, many schools. So there is some transportation typically to practically every school.
Okay, I understand that, but, but it feels misleading and inflated to me to say 105 schools at the same time. Next question would be, after we have met our legal obligations for students needing special ed services, McKinney Bento, et cetera, for helping to expand bus services to other schools, do we have a work plan and a tiering system for which schools would be allowed these transportation by moving these bell times? That was not addressed in the far that I can find.
At this point, the, this bell time will allow us to reach the efficiencies needed with the fleet that we have to serve that first priority of students of special education, McKinney Bento, 504 accommodations. So we would need, again, I need to be clear that we have two issues. We have a shortage of drivers, but the reason when we have a full complement of drivers, we have a two-tier bell time, is that we need this, again, for transportation for all schools. Maybe not a lot of buses, but, but right now, special ed is primarily what we're transporting. And so we need this tier just to serve that, that set of students. Once we get this taken care of, we have some students that, some schools that West Woodland Elementary for, School, for instance, has been relocated to John Marshall, creating, you know, exacerbating a transportation issue just for that school. So we're working to find a solution for those students in particular. We've just made a, a move as the board is where Lipton Springs and created, you know, special transportation issues for those students. So those are high on our list and we're looking at tier, using the XP tiers to see as we add this, would adding tier-one schools be an appropriate way of prioritizing? We are so focused now, again, you know, governor's order was established on March 15th. Our educational model for the first set of students was finalized just last week. So we are fully focused on allocating the resources we do have to meet that first set of students and, and then recruiting and bringing on more drivers so we can add between the, the tiers, which creates some efficiencies in moving the bell times. And then more drivers are coming online, which had been the plan because, again, the district's plan prior to this was to serve the students we were talking about in March 29th. And we have that basically covered. That plan did, was built around a full day, not AM and PM cohorts. So right now, we're, you know, rebuilding routes to cover that. We'll understand then, you know, what the excess capacity is and then how, how many additional drivers we've been able to bring in onboard and train into the system. And then we'll, again, start prioritizing what further general education, transportation we can provide. I, you know, it is probably still likely going to be fairly limited. And we need the survey data that is coming back from families, both information that was finalized last night for intensive service pathways and then the others, to have real numbers to know what our capacity is to add. But again, more specific to your question, you know, the particular you know, the particular transportation is, we've, issues we've created at the particular schools by moving students. Um, and then uh tier one schools was our first thought of a way to start looking at priorities.
Okay, my next question, I have a couple of more, and I apologize for this, but this is very vague to me. Do we not make money on transportation for high-capable courses? HCC West Seattle students, Thurgood Marshall?
I'm, I'm sorry, Director Harris. Can you repeat the question?
It's, it's been my understanding that we make money.
Okay, hold on, sorry. Go ahead.
It's my understanding that transporting HCC students under the state budget SARS or whatever the heck it is we call it now, we actually are reimbursed in full. And I'm using West Seattle students that are transported to First, uh, Thurgood Marshall as an example. Is that not correct?
As, well, we are um tran- reimbursed by the state for yellow bus transportation based on how many destinations and how many students we serve. So it is a, a bit complicated, of a complicated model. So adding destinations and students.
Got special category, sir?
Um, not to my knowledge. Maybe if um there's something I'm missing, if uh Chief Bergy is on the call and wants to speak to, I am um not aware of uh uh special funding related to HCC, but um I, I don't know, again, if Chief Berg, he could speak to that.
No special funding for HCC, not, not for transportation, nope.
Okay, I got misinformed. Next question is, in terms of our communication to the surveys, did we advise parents that they would not have necessarily transportation? Which I'm hearing from a great number of working families that would elect to stay remote if, in fact, they didn't have transportation guaranteed, to go back to the hybrid model. Did we ask that specific question? Because I think that's a deal breaker for a great many families.
My understanding is our survey instrument made it clear that um trans- for the survey for general education students, that transportation um was uh could not be guaranteed and was very limited.
Okay, because social media suggests otherwise. My last question is, what is our relationship with First Student right now, and how much are they assisting us with rehiring former drivers and putting the word out for new drivers? Our relationship with First Student has gone up and down.
I think our relationship is good. Um, you know, we talked to the board about, you know, the date that we would start paying drivers again when there was still some uncertainty about when transportation services would start. They um, their uh income is based on a services delivered per bus. So they're a hundred percent motivated to um bring more drivers back as quickly as they can per their driver's collective bargaining agreement. Um, you know, it, it takes time every year to do this. And in this, you know, drivers have made choices. Um, and as we get later into the year, um, we're uh recruiting drivers for a fairly short window that gets shorter as time progresses. It's, you know, recruiting in the fall for ten months work is different than recruiting in the spring for two and a half months of work. So I think they are making heaven and earth, and and they did. They, they brought two hundred and twenty drivers back uh this spring, and that meets our needs for our first set of students we need to transport, and they're doing what they can. We are looking at other providers and other sources, but um I, I believe our relationship is good, and they're uh working in good faith um to uh, to bring um drivers back.
Very glad to hear. Thank you. I'm probably going to abstain on this motion because it's so vague as far as tiering and as far as the communication to families. And it, and it hurts me because I've been watching transportation for ten years very, very closely. And who knew we were going to have a worldwide pandemic? And a governor and a state superintendent that really didn't care what the operationalized ca- uh cost would be, both in terms of dollars and in terms of human capital. Thank you very much.
Um, so if I can just clarify, Director Harris, this bar, as I understand it, is only about bell times, and those other items are by approving bell times, we're not necessarily approving or not approving anything associated with tiering?
I, I understand that, President Hampton, but to me, they are absolutely intrinsically linked. And I don't think that I have enough information in terms of next step to be able to vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Director Dury?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Director, uh, Hersi?
Hi, thank you. Um, I just want to say for all the parents out there that are super concerned about this, I see you and I hear you. Uh, as a second grade teacher, it's a struggle getting my eight-year-olds to fully wake up and be present at nine AM. And so this is going to be a significant change. And unfortunately, it's going to be one of those things that just comes along uh as we try to reopen our buildings. Um, and as we push forward to that goal with our educators, there, there's going to be some change uh that is necessary to make this uh effective for everybody. My only question is, uh, in your professional opinion, um, Chief Podesta, is this a change that you see us uh continuing to implement into uh the fall potentially as well?
Um, I would expect so. Again, this is really a return to the structure that we've had. I think it, for at least the last three or four years, roughly, uh since we've moved to a two um bell time system, unless we want to, you know, open up the, but there, you know, between transportation, managing school buildings, and athletics and other after-school activities, there's only so much overall flexibility that we have.
No, I totally understand that. And I think that my only request in my next question would be, have we um, and I probably know the answer to this, given the speed at which everything is moving. Um, but are we in the process, or are we planning to do a robust equity analysis of this? Um, so that we can have adequate data uh when we need to make this decision again on how well or not well this worked out for our families, but especially our black families uh during this, you know, spring as we head to the fall?
I think um, we, we, you know, we had the work session a few weeks ago about transportation in general and and the constraints, and having to look again, and it's kind of the same question, how we can use our resources, our financial resources and our transportation resources um uh more judiciously. And equity analysis would be built into that. And as you can see, bell times and scheduling have big impacts on, on the resource um and service levels that transportation can provide. And so since we're expecting all that analysis to be um focused on an equity lens to make sure that, you know, any changes we make. So I, I think we, it's um, it will be front and center, um, that this, this slice of it, how bell times and transportation costs work, and then transportation services in general. Um, the Transportation Department, you know, the, the pandemic um uh interrupted this, but was, had already started to kick off a procedure to look at the whole transportation service standards um from the perspective of equity. And again, bell times are really just, in some respects, um, an appendage to the transportation service standard. So I, I think, yes, we're, we're definitely on a path to do an equity, equity analysis and understand how transportation, its relationship to school schedules affect um uh black students and students furthest from educational justice.
That's really appreciated. Uh, could we get whenever the intersection is appropriate, whether it be Friday memo or at our next transportation work session, which I'm sure will be coming up in a matter of weeks, uh, could we get an update or just an alert when that uh work has begun? So that we can track it. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think I don't have any, uh, well, I guess the only question I have is um what our anticipated assessment data is, and maybe that's what Director Hersi is already asking for, is when do we know what availability we're going to have based on the survey um information we receive, which is due tonight, in case anybody has not filled out their, their survey?
I, I would expect us to have an understanding of this um early next week, that too, we need the overall, you know, what is the level of students returning um to in-person instruction, and then um what is the potential split of AM and PM cohorts, because that essentially creates another school from the perspective of transportation, now that's two school days and one. Um, so that um is a, you know, a big uh consumer of resources. Um, and then, as we've talked about earlier in this meeting, um, secondary um bargaining around the secondary model is still going on. And so how those transportation needs are met uh at middle, middle schools and, and other high schools that do use transportation now. Um, but I think we'll start to get some picture of this um early next week, and then uh also know how many additional resources we're able to bring online.
Um, do we have any, well, before I forget, I want to note something that I don't believe has been said, or if it, if it was, I apologize and I missed it, but that this is based on one student per bench, unless they're from the same family, and that is part of the, the TA. So that, it also goes to capacity. So were we to, in the future, have direct guidance that said, um, otherwise, uh, we might be able to move to um a different model. But for now, the TA dictates one student per bench.
That's correct.
Um, do you know the, the uh percent by which that would increase, that additional students per bench would increase our capacity? Is it just like a doubling, or a, a third, or twenty-five percent?
It, it is not, it, it, the theoretical capacity on a full bus is either thirty, you know, is either a triple or um or double capacity for the bus, you know, given that our again, based on our routing patterns, and um even with two tiers, the uniformity of bell times, um, our buses typically are, are across the system operating at half capacity. So there will be some points where the, the physical distancing on buses actually makes a big difference. It not, it's not enormous, but um again, we actually need the real numbers of which students to which schools and which cohort to know. So what are, how many overloaded buses, if we could relax those parameters, um, if we determine that's safe, that will certainly save us at, uh, you know, save resources at the margin. It is not a wholesale game changer, we don't think.
Okay. Um, and then the um, I, I think I just want to note that um we have, we implemented based on need for sleep for secondary children, um, had shifted to the bell time schedule that we have now. We did have uh, uh, three years ago, two years ago, um, I can't keep track now, but uh when we were, uh, some schools started at nine thirty, some schools started at um eight o'clock, uh, we had um three bell, three um schedules, which provided a lot more flexibility. And I know that we have data coming in that is, that is potentially, we missed a year of data this last year, right? Um, we might be able to gain a little bit this year, but I think it's probably going to be not, not particularly good data with respect to attendance. But um, I, I believe that there's some critical things we're going to need to be looking at in terms of what bell times actually work in, in different communities, as well as the different age groups, and that we do have this earlier bell time on the K five side to allow for a later bell time on the secondary side, which we know to be really, really necessary for those secondary students. So um, so I just want to make that, make, you know, kind of remind folks of, of that as well. Um, and um, I had another question, but I, I, or um, I've, I've lost it. So um, I think we've, we've spent enough time on this, and um, I'm, I'm want to just state for the record that the um, the timing and, and the rush and the way in which that, that we've been forced to bring all kids back at once has in fact created inequities, and that this is one of the few ways, few tools that we have accessible to um, to try to i- insert some more equity back into the equation. And that reminds me of my last question, any luck with um King County Metro? If, if they can help us out at all, and if you don't have to answer that now, we can, I can get it in a Friday memo.
Yes, we have had some discussions. Um, and they are uh making connections for us with some of their resources. And, and both on the elementary side, at least for discussion purposes, and then also helping us think about the secondary model, which is much more reliant on transportation and um what their operating parameters are going to be, and helping us think about um challenges we might have uh if midday transportation is required. So it's, it's there've been constructive conversations so far. We don't, you know, they haven't yielded um huge uh benefits yet, but we're, we're just starting that discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, um, Ms. Wilson Jones, will you please call for the vote?
Yes, just a moment. My computer has momentarily frozen, but I expect it to load in a second here. Um, Director Harris?
Director Harris abstained.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Dury?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Motion has passed with a vote of six yes and one abstention.
Okay, um, we will now move to action item number six, approval to procure HEPA filters for in-person instruction. May I have a motion for this item?
Absolutely. I moved that the school board approved the procurement of HEPA filters with any modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent to complete the procurement. I further moved that the school board waive provision in policy number fourteen twenty, that board action reports will be posted to the district's website at least three days in advance of board meetings. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Okay.
This mush, item has been moved by Vice President Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. This item did not go to committee. Chief Podesta, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, President Hampson. Um, as uh been discussed many times with the board, are, um, there's a our safety plans related to COVID for buildings really rely on increasing ventilation. Um, and we are trying to achieve a standard across our whole system of um twenty-five cubic feet per minute per occupant in a building to bring fresh air into buildings. And we've been working hard to um make sure our, all HVAC systems are working as designed and um balanced in classroom, in our four thousand classrooms and other spaces to achieve this standard. There are uh vigories of any particular building where in a particular space, um, not so much classrooms, but other spaces as well, um, where it's difficult for us to achieve that um twenty-five cubic feet per minute of fresh air per person in the room. And our solution to that are these standalone HEPA filters, um, very fine filters, which, which clean the air in the room, rather relying uh solely on fresh air from the ventilation system. We procured uh three hundred and fifty of these filters and placed, placed them at spot locations in buildings as we were um getting ready for our previous in buildings as we were um getting ready for our previous uh return to in-person learning um around the March timeframe. Um, we immediately made another order um with the governor's order because again, we're just increasing the occupancy of our buildings. We were bringing more grade bands. We wanted to make sure that we might have more spaces and more people in spaces. Um, and so um that led to the second order of five hundred units. Um, and um, we've been deliberating over the past few days as the CDC has announced guidance that um perhaps physical distancing um guidelines would be relaxed instead of uh six feet of physical distancing between occupants of a room to three feet for perhaps um elementary grade bands or others. Again, that would increase um the occupancy in buildings and in rooms. And our our goal is still to provide a certain amount of fresh air per occupant. And so that might um create more spaces where it's difficult to achieve that with the ventilation system that's built into the building. So we want to augment it, potentially augment it with the um standalone HEPA filters, um which are, you know, are a a small plug-in device, not that small, actually, perhaps um the size of a two drawer file cabinet. Uh, where needed and wanted to have those available. We still, you know, we are still uh conforming with the the six-foot guideline and um are still thinking through if uh occupancy were to, or we were allowed to raise occupancy of buildings, that, you know, how many of these devices do we need? They obviously consume, you know, the more we deploy, the more energy we're consuming. It's another kind of maintenance and management obligation. So we're looking for as many solutions as we can. Um, to the point of the late introduction of this bar, we were really have been, are still planning um for what is uh the best solution if the occup- if we can raise the occupancy of our buildings. And so that's why we're asking um uh to have this authority, you know, to buy uh to procure these devices as quickly as needed. They're also um fairly highly in demand uh in the market right now. So we want to kind of have the capacity um in hand, but these are very late-breaking decisions with the governor's order and the potential for perhaps um being to occupy um buildings more densely um is why uh we've added this to the agenda so late in the game. But um, that's that's basically the thinking behind this, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Director DeWolfe, start with you.
Um, I don't have any questions. Chief Podesta, thank you for putting this together so quickly. Um, I read the bar and I appreciate your background. I think this obviously is just seems like a really important, necessary step, particularly as we're bringing students back. So I'm looking forward to supporting this. Thank you for the the background.
Director Hershey?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Director Dury?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Director Harris?
No questions and happy to support this. Anything to keep our folks healthy is okay by me.
Director um Rivera Smith?
I'm sorry for that delay. Um, yes, thank you. Um, very happy to see this come before us. I have a question, though. I'm chief, but I stopped wondering, so this is for um, this this is for the purchase that we've already done of the um portable HEPA filters and then for some additional ones um in case we need to, in case ours are um, we change from the six to three feet distance. Are these though, uh, because I have HEPA filters in my home, actually, and I know they need to be replaced. So is this also include replacement of the actual filters? Um, and how long, first of all, how long are the ones that are in there last? And then is there going to be a separate order then for replacement filters? Not of the unit, but of the filter itself?
Um, we are procuring um filters as a a stock of filters um as we procure the units and will need to monitor the um, you know, the kind of the lifespan, the the operating time of each, you know, once we understand how buildings are occupied and how many hours a day the filters are are being used. Um, those replacement filters, you know, compared to the initial purchase are relatively modest, I'd be surprised unless we have some omnibus procurement of lots of things related to COVID or HVAC that you would see the purchase of the of the uh filter that gets installed. This is the the basic device is um what will be above the procurement threshold.
Okay, I see. Um, yeah, I think I don't um have any other questions for that. Thank you.
Director Rankin?
Thank you. Um, I I guess I wanted to confirm that this will be on like an as-needed basis. You're talking about it mostly to mitigate an increase of um airflow capacity as there are more people in the buildings?
That's correct.
So where and who and at what point would it be determined? I guess whose responsibility is it to determine, hey, we actually need to bring in one of these units in this space based on air movement? And then do, like, how are people clear on um, you know, how to get that unit in place? Because these aren't a default. These aren't gonna be in every classroom. It's an as-needed thing to um, to further uh increase airflow um where where the, where necessary.
Yes, so uh facility operations staff, our HVAC um staff and who have also um enlisted consultants to help because just the workload of the four thousand classrooms are are balancing systems and monitoring um both ventilation throughput um and uh uh carbon dioxide um parts per million in the rooms, and we'll continue to do that um on a regular basis. And then as uh rooms are chosen and staffing is laid out and we know which students um will continue to monitor once the, once the buildings are occupied. Um, given that we've added a lot of grade bands with the governor's orders, it's just a lot more people more quickly. So we just want, where we had equipment on staff. But that that'll be what operating buildings is about as we return and welcome our students back to school.
Okay, yeah, I just, I want people to understand that, you know, if they don't see one of these in their classroom, that doesn't mean that they're missing something, that um it's it's provide, it's it's layered. There's, you know, all of the HVAC systems have been updated and have merged thirteen filters where where they can. And then there's lots of, if if that doesn't improve airflow, then we, and then we also have this strategy. And if that doesn't, then we also have this strategy. So I I I'm hoping that um people understand and feel comfortable with the fact that the these systems are being checked periodically and that um it's not a matter of throwing everything at everyone, but but responding to the actual situation. And same same as with PPE, responding to the actual situation and meeting the need.
We're we're working with school leaders, you know, so they understand how to place work orders or if they have questions, you know, the the initial audit and review of HVAC systems has been provided to school leaders, so they understand the analysis that's done so far. Um, and then we'll all have a lot of learning when students are in buildings. Not everything is gonna get laid out or people won't occupy the building exactly like we expected, so we'll need to adjust.
Yep, thank you.
Director Rivera Smith, you have a follow-up question?
Um, I do, thank you, yes. Um, so I know the interaction nature of this item doesn't allow us to ask for additional documentation necessarily, but it, being as a a large portion of this item is for um items that were already purchased, I just noticed that there is no um, there's no invoice or paperwork for that purchase that's already happened um on this bar. So I'm I'm gonna just for transparency and Chief Podesta, if you could supply us with that, I guess in Friday memo or via email, um, just for, again, for transparency that we see that, you know, it's already been purchased there.
Certainly, we could, we can provide that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, Director DeWolfe, you already went, so um, and this is, um, just to clarify, this is, you're asking for um a an approval authority level. Um, because one, a part of this a- authority has not actually been utilized yet, but you foresee um utilizing it in the in the coming weeks, correct?
Potentially. We um, we made an initial order in January that was below the threshold, the procurement threshold, and then immediately reacted to the governor's order and placed an order for another five hundred units that um we are, by with this bar, kind of acting, asking for retroactive authority for the order that was placed. And then would like to have the contingent authority going forward if um we have considerably more occupancy in buildings. Uh, we were, we've been thinking about um the potential of the three-foot um physical distancing guideline is what has led us to that. And so um if we move to that in a a big way or make other changes, particularly um as we see the secondary educational model, we think it'd be good to have that flexibility. But um to date, um, we've ordered eight hundred and fifty units and would like to have the capacity to have order perhaps another eight hundred.
Great. Okay, um, that's it from me. Um, so if there are no other questions, I would like to ask um Director, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry, uh, President Hampson. I actually do have one, one more question, and I promise it's short.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I am wondering about uh programs and schools that are in buildings that are not SPS buildings, like the Center School in um inside of Seattle Center. How how does that, uh, I mean, I I I assume and hope that principals are all still looped into the same, you know, that 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 principal is the COVID site manager the same way. But are are we running into any issues of like overlap of responsibility or or holes where um responsibility falls through and it's not our building?
We've included um those buildings in our walkthrough process that we're doing now. And then, you know, there are different arrangements with different landlords, if you will. And so we're working with them, you know, on whatever basis makes sense in that building um to try to, you know, achieve the same standards um that we have um in our own building. The occupancy typically of those buildings, you know, whether it's interagency or the Center School are are a bit different. But so far, um, so good. We're we're still working through some of those issues.
Okay, and I imagine we're following in those spaces the same sort of um, uh, we were talking about stickers on, you know, knowing the different things for different rooms. We'll follow those even in structures that are not our whole building.
To the extent it makes sense, again, some of those programs are a a lot different um than some of other schools. But um, yes, trying to uh uphold as many of those standards as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Director Hershey?
I'm online. Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Dury?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, um, so let me just, we're now about to move to uh introduction items. I know that this has been a pretty um uh long board meeting, and I don't want to hold things up, but if um directors need a five-minute um recess?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Five is perfect.
Okay, if we can recess at six fifty-eight, Ms. Wilson Jones? I mean, what did I just say? If we can recess and then reconvene at six fifty-eight, please? Promptly.
Expanding the successful partnership between Seattle Public Schools and the City of Seattle Department of Education and Early Learning to continue funding and to expand preschool classrooms and SPS. A reminder of right now, maybe in this time, March 2014, as a principal of South Shore Pre-K school, I had the opportunity with former early learning director and now executive director of curriculum assessment and instruction, Keshel Tonner, to attend a three-city tour of Boston, Washington DC, and Jersey City to attend a preschool study mission trip and visit some of the finest preschool models in the country. Six years ago, we began this innovative program by funding three preschool classrooms. This year, we're poised to continue supporting our current 29 classrooms and expand to five new sites for a total of 34 classrooms. This means $9,178,000 in investment, 89 teaching positions funded by this partnership. Under the leadership of the Early Learning Department, this program has expanded the opportunities for research-based and inclusive all-day preschool program throughout the city and district. Currently, we are serving 544 students overall and will serve 644 students next year. 90 of these students have IEPs and participate in our SPP Seattle Preschool Plus and Headstart Plus programs. Seattle Public Schools and Deal share a commitment to high-quality early learning and to expanding access to inclusive programming. Each year, our preschool programs ensure our youngest learners are more ready for kindergarten by consistently meeting and exceeding on our whole child assessments and providing foundational opportunities to support their education and future. You will notice the bar indicates $7.6 million. Indeed, our overall expansion budget will be $9.1 million due to an increase in per-people funding. For the April 7th board meeting, the changes will be posted. Now, let's talk specifically about this $9.1 million investment and what it will fund. It will fund the continuation of 29 currently funded classrooms and add five new classrooms, four Headstart Seattle Preschool Plus and one Seattle Preschool Plus, four Headstart expansion sites, serving predominantly students furthest from educational justice, from Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School, Wing Luke, Cascadia, and Northgate Elementary. These programs will become full-day programs from the previous day model. In response to overall lack of SPS preschool opportunities in the central region, we plan to open one new SPP program in the Magnolia Elementary School's newly renovated building wing. With the, with it, it holds the potential to expand in the future to additional developmental preschool, preschool classrooms. In alignment with our Seattle Excellence Strategic Plan, early learnings expansion priorities include increasing opportunities in our 13 focus schools, our Title I schools, Headstart full-day programming, and inclusive special education opportunities throughout the district to ensure access to safe, warm, and engaging, high-quality early learning environments that develop the talent, identity, voice, and agency of our students furthest from educational justice with a focus on African-American boys. This year, our SPP and Headstart SPP classrooms enrolled 249 students of color furthest from educational justice, which made up 50% of overall enrollment, with 12 students served in our McKinney-Bento services. We have Mr. Dwayne Chappell, who is the very fine director of the Department of Education and Early Learning here. And so, Dwayne, Mr. Chappell, I'd love to invite you to have any comments.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Scarlett. Good evening to you. Good evening, school board and superintendent. So, you know, I'm, I am grateful for this partnership. We are grateful for this partnership with Seattle Public Schools on preschool. Super excited to expand to a total of, as Dr. Scarlett mentioned, 34 Seattle Public School SPP classrooms for the 2021-22 school year. Seattle Public Schools is our largest partner with Seattle preschool program, in our Seattle preschool program network. And they represent, you guys represent about a quarter of all of our Seattle preschool program classrooms. So, super thankful for this. We're also appreciative of the district's work to make remote learning as meaningful and engaging as possible for families this year. The Seattle preschool program plus continues to be something that we're extremely or very proud of. And again, this partnership is really, is really a bright spot for our FEP, as Board President Hampson mentioned earlier, our FEP levy investments. We also know that the focus on students further from educational justice has been your priority. I know that there are several points throughout this educational pipeline where our students further from educational justice and our African-American students are lost. And these points really present an opportunity to continue with our investments in African-American children and youth and those further from educational justice. And as, as Dr. Scarlett just mentioned, these first years or the first opportunity is in the early years. I just cannot say more than, should I say, there's so much I could say, but we all know that the access to high-quality preschool is key to ensuring that our scholars are equipped to spread their, their brilliance as they blossom throughout their educational journey. And all of that to say, I'll stop there, is that I'm just extremely excited, excited for our partnership on behalf of our scholars. So I'll pause and just to let you know that I do, we do have Monica Liang-Aggyay, she's our early learning division director on as well.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to turn this over to Director Rankin, who's the head of our Student Services, Curriculum Instruction, to start off our board questions and comments.
Thank you. Um, so are we going to go through, are we going to talk about the promise part today? Or are we focusing on the preschool part today?
This is preschool.
Oh, funding for preschool, sorry, sorry, there, sorry. Yep. Um, thank you. I know, this is a, you know, I remember when this was first being voted on and enacted for the first time in Seattle, and access to high-quality preschool is such an important, such an important thing to provide for, for future academic success, for, for support for working families, support for just, you know, I don't want to say kindergarten readiness, but helping, just helping kids socialize and, and the early development stuff. So I don't have any questions at this time. I do have, well, it could be a question, but I don't think there's an answer to it right now, so I'll make it as a comment, which is that I really look forward to the day that I hope comes soon where we don't have SPP and SPP Plus, where all children are welcome and served at any and all preschool sites, regardless of ability or disability.
And my apologies, Director Rankin, this actually came through A&amp;F. Just started with Director Hersi, so I'll go to him next. I was, I was wondering, I'm like, how does she not know that? So my apologies.
That's okay. I mean, I, I know what this is, obviously, but I was surprised to be called to go first because I was like, this didn't come through me.
Because you had just taken a bite. Okay, Director Hersi, you have, Vice President Hersi, excuse me.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I actually don't have any questions on this item, so we can move on to the next director. I'm just super excited to continue the partnership with Deal and thankful for your time here with us tonight, Brother Chappell, and just excited to continue to work together and get these things done in the interest of our kids.
Okay. So let's go now to Director Dury.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. And then to Director Harris?
Thank you. Greetings. Dwayne, it's good to hear your happy voice and, and collaboration. SPP Plus, what's the ratio of the new programs between SPP and SPP Plus?
Thank you, Board. Harris, good to hear your voice as well. Monica, I mean, let's see if Monica has that. If we don't have it on hand right now, what I can do is like, what I, what I've done before is get that information for you and send it back over for everyone of you. But Monica, are you on, do you know that answer?
Yes. Hi, good evening, Director Harris. Good to hear your voice. We have 19-plus classrooms coming on at, at SPS next year out of 34, so just a little over 50%, 55%.
Happy to hear. Next question. Do we still have the 25% holdback, SPS being the bank for the city of Seattle?
We have not had the 25% holdback in a while. It's been reduced to 15% for a number of years. And yes, we still do have that performance pay, though.
And do you have that performance data banking 15% for the city of Seattle for all of your partners?
Yes, we do. And, and, and Seattle Public Schools has achieved 100% of their performance pay over the years, so.
But then the obvious question is, why can't we remove that piece of the contract?
That is the, that is the ongoing debate, Director Harris. I will let my boss take that one on.
And so, thank you, Director Harris, for the question. As you know, I, I want to make sure that there, that the opportunities for growth and improvement and everyone that we partner with is there. And, and as of right now, it's something that I've been committed to, to making sure that we're using it as, as an opportunity to, to expand on what the lessons that are learned from the CBOs and the providers that we partner with. And so, right now, it is, it's, it's part of our performance pay. I continue to, to discuss it internally, but it's something that I'm committed to and just making sure that folks get a, a opportunity to leverage this performance pay that they are subject to receiving. And there are so many positives that I can go on and on forever, but I don't want to waste this time, but I'm happy to dive deeper with you in a one-on-one or a small session to talk more about it, Director.
Happy to do that. And I would suggest that it wasn't part of the funding mechanisms that the voters approved, as it has not been since the beginning. And perhaps the next mayor will choose to trust the Seattle Public Schools as the trusted partner that we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director, sorry, Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. I would likewise love to be part of that conversation. I'd like to know more about this performance pay and how that works. So if it could be in, that would be great. But I won't hold up this bar necessarily for that. I know that's kind of a separate thing that we talked about. As far as this action item goes, I am really excited about the increase in the inclusive preschool classrooms we'll have. I had the honor of touring the New Wing Luke facilities, and they're beautiful and can't wait to get students in there and have the community get the advantage of that facility. So I don't have any more questions. We talked a lot about this in committee, so thank you. I'll pass to the next director.
Director Rankin? I'm sorry, we already went to Director Rankin. Director DeWolff?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you. And I just will underscore, this issue comes up every year. I know, Dwayne, I appreciate all the work you do for both the district and the city. And I know that this question from Director Harris comes up every time we have this conversation. And it is not because we are trying to, to be annoying, but it's because we actually have a concern about it. And so I just underscore that, you know, this is not us nagging you because we'd like to nag you. We, we are, we are doing this because we don't believe that it's within the bounds of the partnership that we, the trusting partnership that we have. And it just feels a little paternalistic. So I appreciate all the work you do, and I'm excited to support this.
Thank you, Director DeWolff.
So that goes to me. And I love this, I love the preschool program. We're not talking about Promise this time, but love that program as well. I think this is some of the best work that the city and district have done together. I don't have a problem with it, it being in our, in our buildings. I think it's fantastic partnership. Happy to see the increasing equity focus. Yeah, we're, we're, and I will just say, we're going to have to have some deeper conversations about this, and I hope some smarter conversations about the performance pay. We're looking at about $7 million in underspend in our buildings, and a lot of that actually is in performance pay, including at Mercer Middle School. So it, it puts our, our staff in, in, in an awkward decision-making place. And I think it's, we need to figure out ourselves how we need, as a district, how do we want to optimize decision-making at buildings so that they're making the best decisions for student outcomes? And then how do we communicate with our partners, such as at Deal, to make sure that, that our relationship also supports that? And, and I think we're kind of in a, in a, in a tough spot with that right now. So, all that being said, I appreciate, it's always good to have you come and, and present to us, and I really appreciate you, I mean, we're not in person, but good to see you with us. And, and the, again, the growth in this program is, is tremendous and so appreciated by our communities. And we actually have had some other, there's other pieces of it that have to do with groceries that are brought every week. There's really some tremendous benefits throughout the, the city for this program. So thank you for that continued good work. And with that, we can move on to the next introduction item. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you, Dr. Scarlett.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm Concepa Droza, Chief of Student Support Services. I'm here to introduce this board action report. It is for approval due to amendments needed to the original contract submitted previously. These contracts are over the amount previously approved by the board due to a number of additional students added to each of the individual contract rosters. These contracts are for required services for many of our students within special education during this 2020-2021 school year. This motion is to request approval for the unanticipated increases to each of these contracts. I also would like to just have it noted that we did correct the amounts for clarification and transparency. So you will see in the bar with the original contract amount, the additional amounts required, and then the current contract amount needed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for just jumping right in there, Dr. Pedroza. This came through A&amp;F on March 15th and was put forth for approval. So Vice President Hersi, would you like to start off our comments?
Sure. We had a robust conversation about this in committee. It is pretty straightforward. I appreciate the work that's gone into it, and we'll pass to the next director.
Thank you. Director Dury?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Director Harris?
Yeah. We've heard now for five separate years, and Dr. Pedroza, I appreciate that you just took over this division last year. For five separate years, we've heard that Seattle Public Schools wanted to figure out a way to deliver these services in-house. And I well appreciate that this last year is an anomaly because of the pandemic, but are we making any progress on that?
Yes, we have made some progress. One of the areas that we, you know, there's a lot of services and there's various disabilities within our system. One of the progress areas where we actually now serve more students is in the area of behavioral supports. We've hired more behavioral support staff. We still need to do some improvement in that work to make sure that we are still removing those bias in those decisions, but that's not one of the areas that we have done that. It's, it's a, it's a long process. It's not going to be one thing because, as you know, we, all of our students have unique services and there's, and all of our schools have complex needs as well.
And there's, and all of our schools have complex needs as well. But we are working on it.
Do we have any sense of ETA to where we could open up a pilot program?
That's something I actually would love to talk about. It'd be interesting, maybe we could talk about that in committee to discuss more some, maybe because we're going to be having a special education update. I'm going to note this because I think it's a broader conversation that we could have to discuss what we could do to start those processes.
Are you saying that those processes have not been started?
We have, we actually are, we do, we have some still contracts. But as you know, many of the increase of the contracts currently are, many of them are pandemic-related. And we actually have started serving most of our own students. So, we've done both. But I would like to, we can talk about how we, what you're proposing in a conversation in committee so that our team can work on some of the things that you're suggesting. I know we've talked with Director Hampson as well about this notion about contracts and maybe how to do them a little differently, moving them forward through A&amp;F. We've talked about that as well.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to move to Director Anken.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to talk about this in committee or in other environments. And I would also say as sort of, sort of a, not necessarily in contrast to what Director Harris was saying, but until we can show that we're not restraining kids for behavior or discipline, I do not believe that we should attempt to bring students back who have higher behavioral needs, quite honestly.
Thank you, Director Verasmith.
We've talked about this a lot in committee. Thank you for the updates added to the bar that did clarification to the item and how much we were actually talking about. So, thank you for that. Otherwise, I have no questions or comments.
Thank you. Director DeWolff?
No questions at this time. Thanks, Dr. Pedrosa.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And let's move to, oops. Introduction item number four. Nope. It's number three. Amending Board Policy Number Six Two Two Zero Procurement. This came through A&amp;F on March fifteenth for approval, and Chief Financial Officer Jolynn Bergy, I believe you will be briefing us.
Good evening again, directors. This bar, if approved, would increase the threshold of board approval for purchases and non-construction contracts, for construction contracts, and for contract amendments. And these changes are outlined on page one of the bar. By way of background, this policy change was initiated by President Hampson during her tenure as Chair for the Audit and Finance Committee, and continued forward under Vice President Hershey's leadership as the new A&amp;F Chair. Because this bar impacts the work of both the operations and the A&amp;F committees, this was taken to both committees. Both committees expressed strong support for this policy change. I would say that Director Rivera Smith had some questions that we have addressed. We've added the background language requested to the bar outlining the policy changes more clearly. You also had questions about Superintendent Procedure Six Two Two Zero S P dot F. And we have left the revenue thresholds for approval unchanged in that procedure as they do relate to another policy, Six One One Four. And then, we also reviewed, per your request, Procedure H and updated references and titles, et cetera. President Hampson, in committee, you had asked the dollar value of the work hours saved by this change, which we estimate to be about two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars a year. And finally, when this policy was first drafted in 2012, there were very limited administrative procedures for internal routing and approval of contracts. What was implemented significantly changed how contracts and procurements are processed and approved. Under these changes, only three people can sign contracts, and there is, and has been a strict process for administrative review and approval. These proposed changes do include, you know, some counterbalance, increasing the threshold, but also continuing quarterly reporting of all procurements and contracts that would exceed the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar mark. So, anything between the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and the new limit would still be reported on a quarterly basis during the, to the Audit and Finance Committee in a written report. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, let's go to Director Hershey, who is the Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Again, this was discussed robustly in committee. My main question is, we're just going to be making sure that the comments that Director Rivera Smith had made in committee have been addressed. But thank you so much, CFO Bergy, for teeing that up for us, so we should be able to move a little bit more quickly. Really appreciate it. We can pass to the next director.
Okay, and I'm going to go to Director DeWolff. Do you want to comment on this next?
Yeah, thank you so much, President Hampson. I just want to echo Director Hershey. We did have a discussion on this in our operations committee, and I really appreciated the process that the district, and by the district, I mean Chief Bergy and her team, went through to keep the committees informed about this policy update. I really appreciate that both of our committees were engaged on this topic. And I know Chief Pedessa, we had a little analysis about our meetings and to give a little bit of an understanding of what the policy change that we're just, we're talking about now would actually mean for our meetings and efficiency and for staff time and actual staff dollars that it takes to do the work, to bring contracts that are two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars and above, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and above to each of our meetings. And I really appreciate and understand that the staff time focused on putting these smaller contracts through actually does take up a lot of time. So, I'm really personally very excited to see this come through for efficiency. I think our district and our work would be really helped by kind of improving the workflow. And I'm really excited to see this policy update, and I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll go to, let's go to Director Rivera Smith next.
Hi, thank you. Thank you so much for all the updates and changes to the bar. I know I had a lot of questions there, but I think it really did just kind of clarify the areas that need to be there. There was a concern with the policy change that had not been made that was referenced in item F or page, I forgot what it was, F. So, thank you for that. I think that, I think you spoke a little bit to it already, but if you could just explain more, because I think one of the biggest concerns people might have about this item is the lack of oversight the board will have going forward on certain dollar amounts, items. So, and I know in committee you explained how there are a lot of more safeguards and checks and balances that did not exist when this policy was last updated. So, maybe you could explain a little bit more about how we can still be sure that there is adequate oversight of our items?
Sure. President Hampson, I know Director DeWolff has his hand up. I don't know if you want to go to him first, or should I respond?
Are you okay if I just let her respond, Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the process right now, there's three people who can sign contracts depending on level. Amy Fleming, the Accounting Director, can sign up to seventy-five thousand. Then myself, I can sign up to a hundred thousand, where I can sign for Amy. And then the superintendent, and the superintendent can have a designee. Those are the only three people who can do contract approval right now. And there is a whole threshold of approvals where you have to go through your department. It has to come through Amy's office and accounting department. We make sure that there's budget, that they've got the proper paperwork filed, that they've done appropriate procurement. And then it comes to myself and/or to the superintendent, depending on the threshold for additional sign-offs and review.
That is, I mean, that is reassuring, definitely, for those, for the process there. I'm wondering if that is written anywhere, where we could find that process laid out?
Yeah, it's one of the procedures. So, the procedure lays that out. There's a whole matrix. So, let me find out that is, I think it's B or C. It's B, Six Two Two Zero S P B, and it outlines the execution process and who has approval authority and what approvals it has to go through. There's a matrix that's attached in your packet.
Wonderful. Do we have any built-in audits at any point for kind of just oversight of this change? If we make this change, at what interval will we look at it to just to make sure that it is, that it is not leading to any unintended, or no, any items that were missed and lacked the oversight they needed?
Well, I suspect what will happen is, accounting will have the reporting responsibility to report out to Audit and Finance. But I would suspect that this would be something that internal audit would also take a look at as a new policy change and to confirm that we have done that quarterly reporting.
Okay, well, I know we get one more look at this for action, so thank you. No more questions.
Director DeWolff, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to be really clear. Director Rivera Smith said something that is not true. The board, we are elected to have oversight over this district. We will continue to have oversight over this district. This is merely about efficiency, and in fact, the improvements to the process are laid out in procedure. And the district has taken the necessary steps to improve their process to hopefully prevent the types of missteps that took place in the past. But this does not relinquish our oversight role. In fact, I think we are probably, we have more oversight than we ever have. So, I just want to be very clear that that assertion is not true. We still maintain our elected duty oversight of this district. This is about efficiency. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go next, since I did, I want to point out a couple of things that brought this to the fore. One is the extent to which board directors, as a result of this policy, end up pretty deep in what we like to call the weeds with respect to approvals without necessarily any requisite experience to bring to bear. And we have, in part, remedied that by bringing in some additional, using the authority that we have within our committee structure to actually bring in a public advisor. And we'll bring in an additional public advisor, and that helps. And that position goes on past the tenure of a board member in the Audit and Finance Committee. But we also have strengthened the breadth of our Audit and Finance, I mean, sorry, our Audit Team and Structure. And that was one thing I wanted to make sure that we did prior to implementing this. The range of approval levels for school district boards throughout the country of similar sizes is between fifty thousand and a million dollars. We're kind of smack dab in the middle, and there isn't a lot of really clear data. I think this is something that we should continue to look at. It's not as if, once we put this in place, that it can never be considered again. But we don't have any evidence to demonstrate that we're, as we as a board, are adding value. And in fact, the amount of time that it takes for staff to put together board action reports for dollar amounts that I think even at five-hundred thousand, it's like something like point zero three percent of our total budget. I don't know if I did that math right. That's my calculation for five-hundred thousand. Whereas a one-point-five-billion-dollar budget, that's not our operating budget. That's our total budget for the year. But, so five-hundred thousand dollars is a pretty, pretty low bar relative to the scope of the overall budget. And that is part of why I feel very comfortable. In addition to the fact that we do have very strong procedures in place, staff-level procedures, and we, through our risk management and audit system, can choose to look at those and prioritize those for analysis at any point. And that allows us to provide, continue providing that oversight. So, I'm excited to bring this forth. I think that the weight, it was actually something that Director, that the former Director, Director Mack and I had talked about wanting to, particularly for operations because of the sheer volume of items that come before the board that are operations that really just take up too much of our, of staff and our time and discussion and yet for which we're not necessarily providing any expertise or value or particular oversight. If you don't really know what you're looking at, it's difficult to provide that oversight. And we have quite a few excellent structures, thanks to Director Mack and others' staff in place that do, in fact, provide those oversights. So, we have a lot of different ways of keeping track of, and providing checks and balances to those structures. And as long as we continue to utilize those and monitor those and hold ourselves accountable to those and hold staff accountable to those, then I feel really confident about this. So, I'm really relieved to see this coming forward, and I think it'll, it'll create some space in our relationship with staff to show them the extent to which we do trust them to do their jobs. And so, then I'm going to go to Director Dury. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I have one comment that I appreciate, creating efficiencies in systems and within budgets. And so, I look forward to learning more about this as we go forward as well.
Okay, Director Harris?
I wish that I could agree, but I can't. I think that we signed up for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, not five-hundred thousand dollars. And yes, it takes time, but yes, that's what we are elected to do. A couple other comments and reflections. And thank goodness for Chief Financial Officer Jolynn Bergy. She, in the past, has discovered less-than-ethical behavior on the part of non-current staff where they change smaller contracts so that it wouldn't go over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, so they abused their authority. That's been rectified. But there's been an awful lot of contracts in the last ten years that were for two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars, or for two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, or for two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars to escape the oversight of the board. And we were all elected because folks expected us to keep our eyes on the prize here. And it's time-consuming for us, certainly, and it's time-consuming for staff, certainly. But as Tip O'Neill, I think, said, you know, a comma and a zero here, it all adds up. And I think in terms of rebuilding trust with our voters and our communities, we need to keep it where it is. Thank you.
Director Anken?
Again, like I said, always surprising. It's my turn, no matter what it is. Thank you. Yeah, I do support this and understand. You know, when we're talking about projects as large, you know, the projects that come to us for approval are things like, you know, locksets for doors for all the buildings in the, in the school, or in the district. And, you know, literally hardware, and, you know, just because of the volume at which things have to be procured. I, I feel, oh, by the way, sorry, the BTA and BECS Oversight Committee is in support of this. And they see a lot of the items and have a lot of knowledge around the different expenditures and things that would be considered under this new threshold. I want to echo, I guess, I think President Hampson's comments that policy, since this limit was enacted of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and the incidents that were referred to by Director Harris, policy has changed a lot and procedure has changed a lot. And so, I really believe that there is more oversight in more appropriate places now than there was at the time when issues did arise. Partly because those issues arose, there were steps taken to address it and prevent it from happening again. I, you know, my, it's interesting to me to see some of the different items, but I also fully appreciate that it does take a lot of staff time to bring those things before us. And there was a comment made about, you know, the board wanting to just hand out money freely. Well, it's still, it's not, the checkbook's not open. It still goes through a procurement process and has many trusted staff, staff folks go over it. many trusted staff, staff folks go over it. And as Chief Bergy said, there's, there's not a lot of leniency in who can sign. So it's it's not, it's not throwing out, throwing out our capability to oversee. It actually is in a lot of ways strengthening the systems that we already have, as I see it, and a good use of time and funds by tightening up some of the steps that are mostly sort of, and not ceremonial, but yeah, anyway.
Okay, I went very much out of order on this. Did I miss anybody? I see Director Harris, did you have another comment?
No, ma'am. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on.
All right. Yearbook RFP bar. So Dr. Keisha Scarlett, Chief Academic Officer. It said that yearbooks are a visual time capsule of memories. And so this bar is asking the school board to authorize the superintendent to execute a one-year contract extension with Hurf Jones in the amount not to exceed $400,000 and may execute two optional annual extensions, each in the amount not to exceed $400,000, each for a total amount not to exceed 1.2, 1.2 million dollars over three years for the management and classroom support of middle school and high school yearbooks. We originally brought this version of this bar last year. This is a request to get authority for three years for this contract. That said, we continue to take very seriously the annual review and approval process we conduct internally. As we shared at SSC and I committee, we are responding to feedback on Hurf Jones to ensure that their performance meets school staff expectations. The extension of the contract beyond this coming year would still be dependent on the district being satisfied with Hurf Jones's performance. The biggest issue with respect to equity in this contract that has been raised is about affordability. There was an important conversation last year and Director Harris noted during SSC and I are during our last meeting that it is important to revisit this conversation with regard to this contract. The district has taken the following steps to address affordability. The district-wide contract picks advantage of volume pricing. A uniform cost per school is guaranteed that will keep the prices of yearbooks down. Smaller high schools can take advantage of middle school pricing, lowering the baseline cost per book. In addition, some SPS middle and high schools have made yearbooks available to all students by subsidizing the costs. We are learning from this approach as well as other school approaches and working to determine whether a district-wide approach would be helpful. At the March SSC and I meeting, the committee moved this forward for consideration, given, I believe, the desire to have a conversation about affordability related to yearbooks and the connection to our shared efforts to promoting equity, particularly racial equity. In addition, I want to respond briefly to the comment made during public comment today about this contract. In brief, we have had to follow the formal procurement process last year, and this included advertising the RFP in the Daily Journal of Commerce, posting in the Builders Exchange and on the Seattle Public Schools website. In addition, in an effort to diversify the vendor pool, we contract, we contacted Tabor 100, an Association of Entrepreneurs, Business Advocates, who are committed to economic power, educational excellence, and social equity for African Americans and the community at large, and also the Office of Minority and Women's Business Enterprises. We thank you for your consideration of this bar. I would like to note that we have Dr. Caleb Perkins, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, with us this evening, who can help with questions. With that, I will take any questions you have.
President Hanson, you are muted. Sorry, Director Anken, you're up.
Okay, I was, I was, thought that's what you said, but I wasn't sure.
This time you are up. Yes, I'm sorry.
I did realize I was muted. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead. Um, yeah, I don't have any questions as this, we had the opportunity to discuss this in Student Services Curriculum and Instruction Committee. But I do want to reemphasize for folks that this is not a new contract and it's it's an extension of a current one. So there wasn't a whole new RFP process this time, but the process that Dr. Scarlett described was used the last time, just for clarification.
Thank you, Director Rivera, I'm sorry, Director Dole.
No questions here. Thank you for that update, Dr. Scarlett.
Director Rivera Smith?
No questions. Thank you.
Director Harris?
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Scarlett, and also Dr. Perkins for the robust conversation we did have in CCS and I. Dr. Scarlett, you mentioned that some schools subsidize the cost. How did they do that? Are they PTSA funds or what? Or is it different for each school? And which schools and how many schools?
That's a great question. Dr. Perkins, are you with us to address that question?
Yeah, I have a partial, I don't have every single middle and high school, but we have been studying some examples with Eaglestaff and with Roosevelt and others. And yes, it is generally PTSA funds that help subsidize, as well as some schools give the option for students who can pay to also pay into a fund when they are paying for their yearbook to help their classmates. We could get a more systematic approach, but that's that's what we're learning. And as it said, as Dr. Scarlett shared, we're exploring the option of having a district-wide approach to make that more accessible for all.
Well, I sure would appreciate more information. And I, I appreciate the additional information since CCS and I. Thank you for that. And if we could figure out a matrix in your spare time in the middle of the pandemic, right? Now, several years ago, we heard from an entrepreneur, an African American male who had a interest in providing yearbooks. And he felt that by just rolling over this contract on a regular basis, even though we've done RFPs, and I appreciate that we followed the letter of the law last year, what became of our conversations with Tabor 1000 and MBWE as far as opening this up to, opening this up to other contractors and and frankly soliciting them under our race inequity goal?
Yeah, the the points that Dr. Scarlett made are probably the fullest understanding I have. So which is that we we went through the process as guided by the Procurement and Contracting Office to reach out to to those those groups. We do have to be careful, obviously, as I know you know, Director Harris, in terms of just making sure we're reaching out in a way that that all people can access. So there may be additional steps we can take, but we followed the guidance that the Contract Office gave us in terms of trying to diversify the vendors through the Tabor 1000 piece and the and the Office of Women and Minority Businesses.
And when did we do that?
We did that as part of the RFP process for when this contract, as Director Rankin just reminded us, approximately in January of 2020. I'd have to go look back at exactly the dates of when we we did this last year.
Well, that, and I don't know that you were here then, Dr. Perkins, and I don't believe that Dr. Scarlett was in the position she holds now. But I have to tell you, the archivist can bring up the information from this gentleman. And it was frankly very disturbing. And I just hope that we are in touch with Tabor 1000 and MBWE.
Just to be clear, it's Tabor 100. Just just to be clear.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the correction and the, but, but rolling over contracts when we have race inequity goals and we haven't reached back in over a year when these issues were brought up to us is concerning to me. Thank you.
I do recall that there was an exchange in 2019 with the gentleman around the contract for that year. And I believe Dr. Kenosha at the time reached out to him to on how to connect with these other networks. That's for what that's worth. I don't know if that addresses all the concerns.
Appreciate it. Not just one person. It's a systemic issue for me. I appreciate it immensely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, where are we in the list? Director Rivera Smith, please.
Um, I believe I already did, I already passed. I had no questions or comments. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I going in the wrong direction? Director Jury?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Director Hershey?
None for me. Thank you.
Uh, Director Dole, did I already capture you?
Yes, at the top of the top order.
Great, thanks. Okay, thank you so much. Director Perkins and Dr. Scarlett. And and just FYI, the delay here is I'm just bringing back up the form to find out the next item. Direction item number five, approval to rename the Southwest Athletic Complex SWAC to the Nino Cantu Southwest Athletic Complex. This came through March 11th for approval. Over to you, Chief Podesta.
Thank you, President Hanson. This proposal to rename the Southwest Athletic Complex to the Nino Cantu Athletic, Southwest Athletic Complex has been jointly proposed by Chief South International High School Principal Aida Fraser Hammer and Denny Middle, Denny International Middle School Principal Jeff Clark, who have, and it's meant to honor a groundskeeper at the Athletic Complex who served with distinction for nearly two decades. I believe Principal Clark is with us tonight, and I will let him speak to what Mr. Cantu meant to the community, the school community, and athletes and others at this complex.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Clark, proud principal of Denny International Middle School. Principal Aida Fraser Hammer was previously on the call. When we hit the seven o'clock timeframe, she needed to shift over to her PTSA meeting. I do have a colleague with me as a part of our proposal that we're very excited about tonight. And it's a real honor to introduce to you the best kitchen manager in the whole city of Seattle, Ms. Dory Fazio Young. Ms. Dory, are you still logged on with us?
There we go. I forgot to unmute. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Thank you, Directors, Superintendent Juno, and everybody else. My name is Dory Fazio Young. I'm the lunch lady and the dock foreman at Denny International Middle School. Nino Cantu was my best friend. But he wasn't just my best friend. He was everybody's best friend. He served skillfully at as our community as groundkeeper at the Southwest Athletic Complex at SWAC and the campuses of Denny and South for 18 years, from 2000 to 2018. Mr. Cantu made many amazing things possible at SWAC as head groundskeeper and lead staff member for the, and he was also the lead staff member for the events at the stadium. Community events supported by Nino were a wide array of popular activities, including countless Seattle Public Schools, Parks, and Athletic Events, the Special Olympics for years, high school graduation ceremonies for Chief South and West Seattle High School, the All-City Band Summer Jams, our East African community-run Somali soccer games, and the firefighter games. And the National Guard used to come there and do their drills. In addition to being head groundskeeper, Nino joyfully described himself as an artist with the grounds of SWAC, Denny, and South as his canvas. It seems as if he knew everyone by name and story. It was his positive attitude that made him a mentor to many students and gardeners from all around the city, a friend to all people, and a leader within the community. Tragically, Nino Cantu passed away on October 12th, 2018. Nino invited everyone into that complex as if it were his home. He, you came to the complex. It was like, come on in, have a cup of coffee, let's have fun. That's the way Nino was. Nino took in the kids, every kid from all the sports, sporting events. They had nicknames. He'd get on the loudspeaker, make them feel like they were the most important thing. So please, I think this would be just a wonderful thing for the children in our community and our community to have this, have his name on the stadium. That way, his legacy would never die. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dory. Community engagement. This proposal has received incredibly strong and enthusiastic support every time discussed throughout our community. Specifically, the support from Denny International Middle School community. Proposal was shared at our PTSA Board meeting on October 21st, 2020. All PTSA officers were incredibly supportive. The proposal was also shared and discussed in English, Spanish, and Somali at the Denny School PTSA meeting on October 27th, 2020. More than 50 families and staff attended the meeting. Many enthusiastically supportive comments were shared. Everyone in attendance supported the idea. The proposal was also shared at the Denny All Staff Meeting on November 18th, 2020, once again receiving very strong support. To further seek staff input and support, an anonymous survey was given, asking staff if they supported the proposal. Eighty-seven staff members have indicated their support. Support from the Chief South International School community. Proposal to rename the complex, the Nino Cantu Southwest Athletic Complex, was raised during the 2019-2020 school year and was later discussed at a staff meeting on September 28th, 2020. On both occasions, the idea received full support. The formal proposal was shared with staff via email on November 14th, 2020, and comments were invited. Some of the comments received include, "I think this is such a nice gesture. Nino deserves this and would and should be memorialized. My support as a staff member of the Denny South Pathway since 1992 is behind renaming SWAC after Nino. I can't imagine anyone who knew him not supporting it." "Nino was also the dad of one of our amazing special ed students who worked with me many years here at South. This is a great idea. That would be so amazing, and I support this 100%. The written proposal was shared with Chief South families via school messenger on November 15th, 2020. Parents were also invited to comment at the school's virtual cafe on November 19th, 2020. The following is a comment from a parent and community volunteer heartily supporting honoring Nino by naming the SWAC after him. I was lucky to have worked with Nino for many years while working. I was helping run the snack stand. Nino was great to work with, cheerful, enthusiastic, and always willing to help. He remains greatly missed." Equity analysis. This proposal is aligned with Board Policy 0030, Ensuring Educational and Racial Equity, Parts E and H. E, Welcoming School Environments. The district shall ensure that each school creates a welcoming school culture and inclusive environment that reflects and supports the diversity of the school district's student population, their families, and communities. H, Recognizing Diversity. Consistent with the state's regulations and district policy and within budgetary considerations, the district shall provide materials and assessments that reflect the diversity of students and staff, which are geared towards the understanding and appreciation of culture, class, language, ethnicity, and other differences that contribute to the uniqueness of each student and staff member. School Board Policy 0030 was reviewed in the context of this proposal, and it and it is believed that renaming the Southwest Athletic Complex, the Nino Cantu Southwest Athletic Complex, is consistent with the racial equity goals of Seattle Public Schools. By honoring Mr. Cantu in this way, a local African American Latinx person who advocated for students, families, and communities of color, the district will promote educational and racial equity in our schools and community. Student benefits. The scholars of Student benefits. The scholars of Denny Chief South and all schools in the Southwest region will see how the district celebrates and honors the great contributions of individuals within our community who constantly strive to make the lives of others more equitable and society more just. Please join our whole community in supporting the name of the Nino Kantu Southwest Athletic Complex. Thank you very much.
Wow, thank you. That's amazing. I'm so sorry that we didn't make it in time to have your other presenter be here. If, for some reason she comes on and is able to speak, we're happy to make space for that. And with that, I will turn it over to Director DeWolff, who's the Chair of the Operations Committee.
Thank you, President Hampson, and thank you to our guests tonight. Just as context, we had, we were able to have our guests from tonight actually join us at our Operations Committee meeting in February, and we heard this presentation. And just as a quick, I guess where we landed, we, you know, we voted unanimously to approve this, to send this up to, for approval to the full board, and I just, it feels at this point like it makes complete sense. This is exactly the kind of people, the kind of person really that we want to honor and memorialize as part of this district. And certainly, it's a great reminder that there are many folks who are memorialized in this district with names on our schools who likely don't deserve that, because the folks, because I think the folks like Nino are at the caliber of the types of people that we always want to memorialize at Seattle Public Schools. So I am really excited about this, this renaming, and I don't have any questions. You had a thorough presentation, and everything in the bar is, is on the up and up, and I'm happy to support this.
Okay, let's go to Director Rankin.
I was totally ready that time. Um, no, I was fortunate to be able to hear from tonight's presenters and a couple more people at the Operations Committee meeting, and I, I don't have any questions. I just, you know, there's been buzz around other districts and other, you know, other issues that have come up that, you know, with, with renaming things of, of people saying, you know, oh, why are they doing that right now? Isn't there more important things to do? And, and I actually don't think that there could be things that would take a lot of importance over honoring someone from our community and someone that we want to remember, and remembering, you know, joy, even, even in times when everything seems very urgent and, and emergency. There's good stuff happening too, and there's stuff that we want to hold on to and remember. And at the operations meeting, having, having you all there was just this kind of moment of, of relief and connection. And I hope that moving this forward and having the, the building take the name of this person will, will continue to serve as that for your community. So, thank you so much for being here, and I'm, I can't wait to vote on this next time.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith? Director Rivera Smith?
Sorry, my slow computer. Um, thank you. No, definitely, we, we talked about this committee, and so happy that we have other representatives there to share their stories. Thank you, Dory, for all the work you've done, building support for this. Principal Clark, love your background. Thank you for being here tonight and sharing this with us. Nino sounds like an amazing person that I was so excited to honor, and I also do feel this is time well spent, despite what might be also on her plate. We were honored to be able to do this for him, and look forward to supporting this when it comes up for our vote. Thank you.
Director Harris?
Thanks so much. Thank you, Principal Smith, and Ms. Dory, I believe that you misidentified yourself. I don't believe you're just the lunch lady in the dock box, but I believe you are now promoted to the kitchen manager. And I'm thrilled by this. I can see the lights of SWAC, hopefully soon, Nino Kantu, SWAC from my home. I've attended well over 100 events there and hope to live long enough to attend another 100. And everything that has been said about Nino Kantu is true. I knew him. But, but I think part of the, the heartfelt here is we in the SPS family and in so many other bureaucracies celebrate the folks on the top of the food chain. And Nino Kantu was boots on the ground, day in, day out, again, for 20 years, cheered, smiled, embraced. And I'm beyond thrilled that we are celebrating someone that doesn't have a lot of initials after their name, and, and that shows up every day to hug and support and love our students. And I'm sure Superintendent Juno will be thrilled that I'm no longer harassing her on a monthly basis about the status of this. And my hope is that Principal Aida Fraser Hammer can join us when this is up for action, and we can also grat, congratulate her on her long and storied career as the principal of Chief South International High School, as she is retiring this year. From my heart to everybody, I beg of you, this is the right thing to do, and this is the right time to do it. And I really appreciate Principal and Dory showing up to, to make this happen, and your communities that you've reached back into and got such extraordinary support for this. Thank you.
Director Dury?
I just want to say thank you to the presenters who came and had this great presentation to remember Mr. Kantu, and I look forward to seeing this in action.
Director Hersi?
There's nothing that I can say that hasn't already been said, so just expressing great gratitude, you know, sounds like an amazing person, and I just wish I could have met them. But I am happy to support this when it comes before us for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you so much for, for coming, and, and we'll look forward to seeing you all. I think you'll have good support, it sounds like, from the sounds of things, and we'll look forward to seeing you when this comes forward at our next meeting for action. Well, that, we'll move on to item, actually, item number six. Directors from here on out, we have to get through to 15, all operations. And so, I'm going to, after Chief Podesta does the presentation, I'm going to ask for any directors that have comments or questions, rather than doing a roll call. So, please be prepared to raise your hand, or for Director Hersi to, Director Harris, who's on the phone, to holler and let me know that you need to make a comment or ask a question. Okay? So, introduction item number six, Bex 5 Award Contract P18939 for Accessibility Consulting Services to Studio Pacifica for the Bex 5 Program. This came through Ops on March 11th and was recommended for approval. Chief Podesta?
Thank you, President Hampson. This, again, is for consulting services for an accessibility expert for 16 construction projects that are part of the Bex 5 capital levy. And the, the goals of this are, of course, to have maximum accessibility to our buildings and also to be compliant with the American Disabilities Act, which does not actually have a permitting process, unlike the building code or the electrical code. So it's good to bring in an expert with kind of that eye to review our designs, review our buildings, give us advice on how to make them more accessible, and also to make sure that we are in compliance with the ADA. Happy to take any questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions? If you're able to, please raise your hand. Otherwise, if you're on the phone, please speak up. Director Rankin?
Um, I'm really excited about this. Um, so it's for upcoming projects, not any back, back-going, back, backwards-looking projects. Um, in the past, has this been something that's been done, not been done, done in a different way?
My understanding is we've done it in selected projects, or we, we relied on our designers to bring, to bring this expertise. I'm not aware of us having done it kind of at this programmatic level across multiple projects. And, and so, we'll see how, you know, the, the effects of this, I think, is a deeper level of expertise than we've had in the past. And as we talked, this question was raised, I believe, in the operations as well, that depending on our experience with this, we might add this type of service into our facility condition assessments and do, you know, a broader analysis of other buildings, not just buildings that are under construction.
I, I think that's great, and I, I'm really excited about having this being done proactively as part of projects as opposed to a sort of afterthought and, and tacked on. So, this is, this is great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Director Harris here. I was particularly excited about Chief Podesta mentioning that this might be included in our building condition surveys, and I sincerely hope it is. Thank you.
Anything else? Going once, going twice? All right, let's move on to introduction item number seven.
Thank you. This is the
Sorry, let me just read it really quick. This is Bex 5 Resolution 2020/21, Racial Imbalance Analysis for Van Asselt School Addition Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Go ahead. Sorry, Chief Podesta.
Thank you, President Hampson. As you know, projects with state funding, as part of the state funding process, require us to do analysis whether the project changes enrollment or will have either create or aggravate racial imbalance with respect to enrollment. This particular project is a 20-classroom addition to the Van Asselt School, which we're using as an interim site to house students while other buildings are being either modernized or constructed. And so by definition, it doesn't really have a long-term effect on enrollment, because students will only be temporarily in this addition, and then will move back to their homeschool, their assigned school, wherever it is. So, we can assert that this does not have a racial, will not create a racial imbalance in the district.
Thank you. Okay, any comments, questions, or concerns from directors? Going once, going twice, going three times? All right, let's move to introduction item number eight, just quite a lengthy item. Uh, this is Building Excellence, Bex 5 School Construction Assistance Program and Distress School Grant, Resolution Number 2020/2120, certifying the intent to construct for Kimball Elementary School replacement, Northgate Elementary School replacement, Woodlands Elementary School replacement, Lincoln High School Phase 2 Gymnasium Building, Rainier Beach High School replacement, and Van Asselt Classroom and Gymnasium Addition Projects. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Chief Podesta?
Thank you. Again, this is a requirement of state funding that requires that the board certify that these School Construction Assistant Program funds and distress school grants, that we will utilize the funds for the intent that they were proposed, with their original intent, and just requires the board to certify that these funds will be used as originally planned, and we've just put all the projects into a single bar and resolution. This is a purely administrative step.
Any comments, questions, or concerns from directors?
Director Harris, mind just to thank you to the state, and thank you to our legislative delegation for always advocating and supporting us.
Okay. If there's nothing from other directors, we'll now move to introduction item number nine. This is Bex 5 Distress School Grant and K3 Class Size Reduction Grant, Approval Budget Transfer for the West Woodlands Elementary, uh, is it Woodland or Woods? Have I been saying it wrong? Is it West Woodlands or West Woodland?
I
No S.
Think we all say Woodlands, but I think it's Woodland.
My apologies for every mistake that I have made in this pronouncing that name this, for 10, some 10 years. Okay, West Woodland Elementary Addition and Modernization Projects. Uh, this came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Chief Podesta?
This, the West Woodland Project is a classroom addition of 12 new classrooms and expanded gym area and commons area and some other support spaces. The original budget put together for this project just created, had new furniture and finishes and equipment in the new part of, in the addition, and the modernized parts of the building and expanded parts of the building. But the original furniture and fittings in the building were put in place in 1991 when the building opened and are not in very good condition, and we feel it would be a big equity issue for students. That's part of the building, has worn out furniture, and the, the new addition has all new fittings. So, we are transferring budget from other parts of the program where we have discretion from savings and other projects, so the school can be uniformly outfitted with new furniture.
Uh, any comments, questions, concerns from any directors?
Director Harris here. I think it's very important that we update our schools between have-not schools, and I'm excited to see us taking a look at our schools that have not been rebuilt or additions made to. It matters where our children learn, children learn, our students learn, and, and to look at the school up the street that's brand-new and shiny, and, and to be working with furniture from 1991 is an embarrassment, frankly. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Director Harris. We'll now move to introduction item number 10, Bex 5 Approval of Construction Change Order Number 5 for the Van Asselt Elementary School at African American Academy. School is renamed Rising Star Elementary at African American Academy after the contract had been executed with Wayne's Roofing, Inc. Roof Replacement Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Chief Podesta?
Thank you, President Hampson. We originally planned for the roof work at Rising Star, which started two years ago and was meant to be completed over the summers of 2019 and 2020, as minor repairs to some of the metal deck and the roof. And the metal deck is the metal portion of the building that, that the roof sits on. And once those repairs were started in 2019, it became clear that that metal deck, which was no longer under warranty, had degraded much, much more seriously and much, in a much bigger area than had been originally expected. So we've had a couple of change orders to basically replace near about three-fourths of the metal decking that makes up that roof. This is the last change order to finish this work and to, to complete, you know, replacing the whole system really at this school. And the work is nearing completion now.
Anything from directors? Okay, hearing nothing. Uh, thank you, Chief Podesta. We will move now to introduction item number 11, Bex 5 Approval of Parametrics Contract Modification Number 2 for the Rainier Beach High School Replacement Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Chief Podesta?
Thank you. This change order is, Parametrics is our interim contract manager for the Rainier Beach High School Replacement Project, and this adds a subconsultant, McClellan Design, the Clennan Design, excuse me, who has helped us think a lot about our sustainability goals and our methods and materials that we use in construction to build more sustainable schools. And given the scope, the size and scope of the Rainier Beach High School Replacement Project, we think it's prudent to get extra expertise to make sure that this, that the new Rainier Beach High School, the new parts of the that the new Rainier Beach High School, the new parts of the building that we're constructing with this replacement are really the model going forward for how we do sustainability construction and build sustainable buildings. And are really excited and feel that this work will be a great first step to meeting the goals of being aligned with the goals of the Clean Energy Resolution that the board recently adopted.
Thank you, Chief Podesta. Directors, any comments, questions?
Director Harris here. I want to take issue with comments made in the public comment portion of a debate from Mr. Jackins about Rainier Beach High School. Rainier Beach High School is a high school that has waited far, far too long for rebuild, additions, and rehabilitation. And I don't believe that the community supports his mentality that we should not move forward and modernize that school. And in fact, it's exactly the opposite. The community supports this. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Let's see, I see questions also from Director D Wolf and then Director Rankin.
Yeah, thanks, President Hampson. I just want to underscore that. I appreciate you bringing that up, Director Harris, because what's really important here is that people might have their own personal opinions, but the community organizing, the student organizing that took place to get to Rainier Beach High School, updated, upgraded, remodeled, reconstructed, took a lot of work and a lot of energy. And I think it's frustrating when people try to discount people that are paying attention. And the other thing that I think is really important, particularly now that I'm on the chair of the Operations Committee, is these people want us to keep these schools as they were, in amber, systems that are breaking down, windows that can't keep in heat, materials that are breaking down. That's what they want us to keep for our kids, and I will reiterate what I reiterated at our BTA 5 levy conversation. Our buildings and our facilities are monuments to our students, young people, and public education. Rainier Beach High School needs an upgrade to illustrate how much we respect, care for, and want to build a monument to our young people and their futures. And so it is misguided, it is misinformed, and it is certainly not taking into account what the actual overall community really wants, which is the reconstruction. So thank you, Director Harris, for bringing that up.
Thank you, Director D Wolf. Director Rankin?
Yeah, along the same vein, there were quite a few years in a row that as a community member and audience member of school board meetings, I saw a lot of student organization and students from Rainier Beach coming to the board, students even that knew they would graduate before there was any chance of any kind of rebuild, advocating for this for their, for their community. And I, you know, we're here for the students. And in addition, in terms of funding, there's a sort of misunderstanding among some people that retrofitting or remodeling an existing building is a cost savings. And once a building is landmarked, the outside envelope, as it's called, cannot be touched. And it's not a cost savings to put modern, updated infrastructure into a building that has outlived its efficiency and appropriateness as a learning environment. It's not cost-effective to do that, and it is in fact more cost-effective to build again. And it is, in this case, what the community wants and what these students really deserve.
Okay, anything else from directors? Okay, thank you for those comments. Hearing nothing, we will go to introduction item number 12. Vex 5 Resolution 2020/2119, Approval of General Contractor/Construction Manager Delivery Method and Award General Contractor/Construction Manager Contract P5160 to Lydick Construction, Inc. for the Rainier Beach High School Replacement Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Chief Podesta?
Thank you. Again, this bar does do two things. The State Public Works Law allows school districts to utilize alternative public works, project delivery methods, and the general contractor/construction manager method allows us to hire a single overall contractor who will then bid out other parts of the project but be with us from the very beginning, as opposed to us doing a design contract with a design firm and then separate bids and low-price bids with other construction contractors. And that method doesn't, the regular design-bid-build process has not served the district always well for large projects. We believe the GCCM model works much better. We've used it on a variety of complex projects. Recently, the modernization of Lincoln High School was done as a GCCM, and this same contractor, Lydick Construction, handled that work. And that really helps us partner with our contractors earlier and have a, have an advocate as we move on with other contractors and subcontractors that will do the work. So this action report, again, creates a resolution where we, the board certifies to the state that we're ready and able to manage this alternative public works method, and then awards the contract to Lydick Construction and agrees to a guaranteed maximum price of $153 million to manage the whole project, construction side of the project for the replacement of Rainier Beach High School. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Directors, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to introduction item number 13. Vex 5 Award Construction Project P5143 to KCDA/Musco Sport Lighting for LLC for the Athletic Field Lighting Improvements in Jane Addams Middle School Project. This came through Ops for approval on March 11th. Chief Podesta?
Thank you. The district has had a program over the past few years to install field lighting at secondary schools, so to support student athletes and community use of fields. Again, as we shifted bell times to have secondary schools later in the day, we want to increase access to fields to be later in the day. This is a project for Jane Addams Middle School, and we'll construct field lighting. We've chosen through the Purchasing Cooperative, King County Directors Association, Musco Sports Lighting, which is the only, the city of Seattle has very progressive standards for outdoor lighting to make lighting not be intrusive with neighbors. And the, we have very modern design where it really focuses lighting on the field and does not cause extraneous lighting to have negative impacts on neighborhoods. This vendor is the only provider that can provide lighting that meets the city standards, and we're ready to proceed with this project, and this contract would award the construction. And happy to take any questions directors might have.
Okay, directors, any questions about the lighting at Jane Addams Middle School? All right, I guess that's been appropriately illuminated. Thank you, Chief Podesta. We will, we will now move to introduction item number 14. Vex 4, Vex 5 Distress School Grant Award Construction Contract P5157, Bid Number B102027 to Forma Construction for the North Beach Elementary School Heating-Ventilation Exterior Door and Seismic Improvement Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Chief Podesta?
This, again, is a combination project where we make seismic improvements and structural improvements to the building and demolish and remove materials as needed, install the bracing and seismic upgrades as needed, and make improvements to HVAC and other mechanical systems in the building coinciding. It's an efficiency to do this work together, and this action will award the contract to Forma, who wanted as part of a competitive process.
Directors, any questions about this particular item?
Okay, I think we can close the door on this one, and we'll move now to-
Actually, wait, sorry.
And also, I noticed your puns, Director Hampson.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get some people-
The 8:30 hour. I'm just curious about what the longevity is expected on these, because I know that North Beach is a school that was in the so-called bubble of almost being, almost making the cut for rebuilding, not quite.
That, you know, this will-
What? What was that?
My, my comment was several times, it almost made the cut.
You know, that it will obviously depend on what the remaining use of the building is. Then, you know, these are safety and life safety issues with seismic improvements and also ventilation. And if the North Beach project is undertaken, or a major project is undertaken as, you know, part of BTA 5 planning, let's say, you know, once we get through the levy process, the planning process and the work process, you know, that if there's a new building ultimately in North Beach, you know, that's approaching the better part of the decade. And so I do think the right thing to do is, in the intervening years, the students in that building deserve the benefit, the safety, life safety benefits of this.
Absolutely, yes. I'm by no means advocating that we shouldn't do a seismic improvement or ventilation improvement, but I just, kind of just wanted to acknowledge that this is a building that needs more attention at some point.
You know, it was unfortunate it didn't, you know, fit into the Vex 6 levy, and we'll always have these kind of shoulder projects that are between levies, and we'll have to make interim investments, but that's the right thing to do for the students in their interim years.
Great, thank you.
Anything else from directors? Okay, and last but not least, we will move to introduction item number 15. Vex 4 Award Construction Project P5131, Bid Number B102026 to Lincoln Construction, Inc. for the Washington Middle School Seismic Improvements Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval.
Likewise, this is not so much about HVAC, but strictly a seismic improvement project. There will be relocation of some architectural elements and improvements to electrical and plumbing and mechanical systems, but again, this is part of our ongoing program to retrofit buildings to, for life safety purposes and to protect our assets to be more prepared in the event of a seismic event.
By the way, just kidding, this is not the last item. We have two more. Somehow got 15 stuck in my head, but it's 17. Okay, any shakeup on this one? From directors?
Hi, I'm-
Oh my gosh, Chandra.
Take off, well done!
Sorry, I'm just trying to keep you entertained. Okay, Director, Director Ver Smith?
Hi, yeah, no, thanks. Now, I, we talked about this in committee and mentioned how Washington Middle School was on the bubble for, I believe, Vex 5. So I have a question about, you know, we're putting this money into these improvements when this could end up being on our next levy and getting rebuilt. But Chief Podesta, we spoke to how it's still investment to be made. So I want to talk about how it's important to do this now.
When you, you think of the overall value of all our physical plant, these investments, well, you know, they're not trivial with respect to how many years, how many students are going to be, enjoy their benefits, even if it isn't the full life of the building. I think it still represents a wise investment.
Thank you.
Particularly safety issues.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to introduction item number 16. Vex 4 Final Acceptance of Contract P5123 with CDK Construction Services, Inc. for the Katherine Blaine Seismic Improvements Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Podesta?
Again, Catherine, this was a completed seismic improvement project that went to the board, and the board had oversight of the, awarding the contract. The final acceptance allows us to release the project retainage with the, accept the work as complete and which was completed, and release any contract retainage to the vendor. This and the intro item 17 are both final acceptances.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, this school now being on a solid ground, we will move to number 17.
Whoa!
BTA 4, Vex 5, Final Acceptance of Contract K5120 with Coast-to-Cost Turf for the Athletic Field Improvements at Nathan Hale High School and Jane Addams Middle School Project. This came through Ops on March 11th for approval. Chief Podesta?
Thank you. We have a rotating program to replace athletic fields and tracks and other similar built environments as they reach their end of life. We completed last summer projects for Hale and Jane Addams, and have accepted the installation of the fields as working as designed, and we've accepted the work from the contractor, and this, again, is our final acceptance and a reason to celebrate. Projects are done.
Okay, comments, questions, concerns about this?
Just waiting for the pun.
Oh, well. If hearing none, then I believe we've finally run aground.
Okay.
I thought that was pretty good. All right, thank, Fred, it's just, I have to tell you how impressed I am at the level of engagement that you're able to maintain and which indicates just how invested you are in these critical, critical projects. I don't mean to make light of them, just trying to, to keep us, it takes, insert some levity so we can stay awake, but, but your clear descriptions are always appreciated on all of these items. So thank you so much. And with that, we are now going to move to, oh, wait, are we not doing? Because we're not doing board comments tonight. Oh, no, we are doing board comments. Oh, okay, well, here we go. We're gonna start with Director Hersi.
For the sake of time, I'm going to waive my comments and just say, excuse me, I'm trying to eat dinner at the same time, and just say to all of the folks that are concerned about the dual-language immersion pathway at Mercer, that item is being rectified and worked on right now, and expect updates soon. So thank you for your advocacy around that.
Director Harris?
I will try and condense my comments, but I've got a bunch of them. First of all, thank you, President Hampson, for the levity that you've been inserting. It's much appreciated. Thank you. Welcome to the jury. It's, it's, it's a bizarre job, but it's a meaningful one, and you will never work with better and more committed or committable people in your life. I, I want to call out the good governor and the state superintendent- to call out the good governor and the state superintendent yet again. And I'm angry about being kneecapped without warning and without an understanding of all the operational issues and the funding issues. And I want to say again for the record, and I guess this is going to be one of those things like I used to do about the fines, that we used to talk about McCleary 1, and I want a McCleary 2 lawsuit, and I want a lawsuit against the state on the Stars Transportation Funding Formula. It's inconsistent, it's inappropriate, it's inequitable, and we are the largest school district in the state by well over a third, and it's not fair, it's not nice, and it certainly isn't equitable. And with respect to that, when we're talking about equity and money, I will continue to advocate for a more transparent weighted staffing standard formula. I understand that one of the schools in my district, the staff voted everybody but one to not accepting the weighted staffing standard and the budgeting issues. So stand by, I've asked that they send it directly to the school board address so everybody's on the same page. From the bottom of my heart, I thank my colleagues for the generous conversation about the Nino Cantu Southwest Athletic Complex. And with any luck at all, we will be in person for the next band jam, and I'll hold a barbecue in my backyard afterwards. But it's one of the best, funnest, joyous events in this city, and it usually happens in early August. Already talked about my anger at Mr. Jackin's comments about Rainier Beach High School. Couldn't be more disappointed. Also, I'm going to cut off the rest of my comments other than if we're going to ask staff and students to go back to school, I think we as a board need to go back to the building and do what we need to do to be socially distanced and hold our meetings in person at a later time so that community and families can attend and maybe have a, I know, "hybrid," air quotes, of in-person testimony and phone-in testimony like we've been doing for the last year. And I think we will get more out of it because we are missing the personal connection. And I think that we need to model that behavior if we're asking for other folks to come back in. The last piece is a very sad piece, and that's that my predecessor Marty McLaren, District 6 Director and a friend, and certainly we had our issues during the election, but we spent time together. And I well remember having tea in her home at Puget Ridge Co-op. And two days before she died, she sent me one of the most beautiful emails. And she asked me to get busy, if I could, to go to the legislature and get school board directors paid and to get more funding for school boards. And also to work on the funding issues because the legislature and the state has not implemented the prototypical model. We're talking about supplementation now with the federal funds. We're being bullied and blackmailed, quite frankly, by the state superintendent. And I'm happy to say that out loud because lord knows I have said it to his face and I consider him a friend as well. But our system is not working for our students. And I will make good on that promise to her. And I'm devastated that she has left us, but I am proud of our friendship and extraordinary respect to her. How can we have a social-emotional emergency when this state only pays for nine school nurses and isn't paying for counselors and student support workers and all of that and more? And yes, there are federal funds coming, but they are one-time funds. Sustainability is our watchword, and I'm more than proud to be part of a board that is talking about sustainability and systems change, long overdue. But a whole lot of this is a whole lot of lies, quite frankly, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but we got to figure out a way to get our message out there and truly follow the money. Last, I'm very pleased that we passed the bars tonight for the transition between our superintendents. I've said it before, I'll say it again. I have extraordinary respect for Dr. Brent Jones, and I will give him my very best effort. And I'm sorry, from the bottom of my heart, that it didn't work out with superintendent, you know. But folks, let's give her props for not exercising some pretty significant contract rights and made a graceful compromise. And it needs to be said, and I thank you all, and it's an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
Okay, Director Rivera Smith?
Hi, thank you. Long night. So thank you, everyone, for sticking with us. And of course, congratulations to our newly appointed director, Erin Dury. All I can say is buckle up. We have a lot of work ahead of us. So thank you for joining us. I also want to speak a little bit in light of the students, parents, and educators who joined us tonight to speak about the proposed cuts to the dual-language, the Spanish immersion courses at Mercer. I can't speak directly to that situation without knowing more about it, but I do appreciate the mitigation that Superintendent General spoke of in her superintendent comments and that Director Hersi shared that are in the works. So that's great to hear. I just, I more want to speak to sort of an overarching concern there that is perhaps at the root of why many of our speakers tonight feel especially troubled by the cuts. And that is, you know, a feeling of dismissal and disregard for our Spanish language hurts students. And it goes by many identifications. We have, you know, Latina, Latina, Latinx, Hispanic, and more. I believe our district uses the Hispanic categorization. But anyway, actions like what's potentially happening at Mercer can't help but feel like an attack on our people and our culture. So this, and this is a sentiment that was shared with me by Estelle Ortega, the founder and executive director at El Centro de la Raza, who spoke of a feeling of disengagement from SPS when it comes to the needs of our Latino students. She said, and I'll quote, "Sometimes it feels like we don't exist." And our brown students coming to our education system often with language barriers, economic disadvantages, and many other systemic inequities. And I just look forward to working with community and bringing forward more conversations to increase our attention to the needs of our Hispanic students. And I want to shift gears here, because I also wanted to recognize the loss of a light in our Lincoln High School community this past week. I'm sorry. Ezra Mancini was an amazing young man. And my family had the honor of being a community with him and his family in elementary school. And that community is coming together to pour out our love and support for the Mancini family. We are sharing our memories and coming together to do what we can to support the family and just remember Ezra for all the wonderful things that he brought to everyone's life. I want to thank Patricia Sanders and the coordinated school health team for your attention and support of the Lincoln community. Thank you for acting so quickly there. And parents, I just want to say please hold your children close always. And to the Mancini family, we hold your hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. Director Rankin?
Thank you. I know it's late, so I'll try to keep it concise, which for me is maybe not that concise, but I'll try. I also want to welcome and congratulate Director Dury, and I am really looking forward to working with you and getting to know you and having another partner on this wild adventure that we're all having right now. I want to echo something that Director Harris mentioned, which is, you know, the kind of what we're all dealing with right now, which is a directive from the governor. And there's been, I also, I want to give a just giant, huge shout out and thank you to staff and educators for, you know, as much as families, I know families are feeling like there's a new thing every day and there's, you know, a bell time change, and then it's in person, and then what's happening with secondary and all this stuff. And that is super real, and we know how real it is because that is what we're experiencing too as leaders and as staff people. And that every time some new piece of information has come, it means that whole teams of folks who work for SPS as educators, as maintenance, as facilities, you know, as curriculum, every single one of those things means that a whole bunch of people who have been, you know, going at full steam also have to switch direction to whatever is coming at us next. So I just wanted to acknowledge that because I think it's forgotten how many people all of these things are affecting and impacting and that, you know, central offices, we're not just sitting around waiting for something to happen that has just been constant, constant, constant for everybody. And that as soon as we think we can kind of count on one thing, the rug gets pulled out from under us and we're going in a different direction. And so while I know that there are a lot of people that are really excited and happy and cannot wait to have their kids return to buildings, a lot of teachers that cannot wait to see you, my kids included, are so done with remote learning. However, there's still a lot of unknowns and we're still being directed to do this in a way that wasn't how we anticipated. And so I want to acknowledge, on the one hand, that, you know, I understand the frustrations of people who are waiting for a plan, waiting for a date, waiting for something to come. And that honestly includes us to a lot of extent because we gave, the resolutions that we passed three different times, gave the same direction for the same groups of students for gradual return. And that would have had more students in buildings right now if we were able to make that happen. And so, you know, I understand the, well, the sense of urgency that was being felt and the directive that came down, I understand to some extent, but I also think it was clearly a move of impatience and not one of community care. And especially when the district and our teachers' union were really close to coming to agreement around the board's directive, literally almost the same day that the governor made his announcement, everybody had to immediately drop and shift gears. And so there are a lot of things that are not ready to go on a dime because we've been underfunded for a lot of years, and we don't have extra resources that we're sitting on. Everything, everybody's going at maximum. Everybody is, you know, working long, 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 long hours. And not to say there haven't been mistakes made, but just if it feels like new things are coming at you all the time, it's because new things are coming at us all the time. And there's a shift to try to serve as many students as equitably as we can in the face of, you know, people telling us that everybody's going back for mental health, but then saying that we have to provide predominantly content delivery and not focus too much on social emotional learning, which I actually find pretty offensive and upsetting, to be frank. So, yeah, I just hold on all you can. And we're doing our best to serve as many students as we can in the most equitable way possible in a very tight timeframe. We will get through this. And I'm now really looking forward to conversations about fall as an entire community that are not driven by deadlines from the governor and not driven by restrictions around bargaining for us all to come back together as a whole district, educators, families, staff, board, parents, students, and pivot again. But to have a little bit more space to talk about what we want and how we all want to get there together. And that's more than enough for me.
Director DeWolff?
I said all I need to say tonight. Thanks for all of your hard work, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Dury.
I just wanted to say thanks to everybody again, and thanks for your vote and your vote of confidence in the words that you spoke. I look forward to working with you all and digging in and learning more and getting the work done. Thank you.
Okay, so, welcome, Director Dury. And I will call you tomorrow. And Pina Gigi, thank you to everyone. I have my Thursdays in the Park with Chandra. Tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., we'll be meeting at the Community Center in Magnuson Park for anyone that wants to come join and talk about what's going on in Seattle Public Schools or just walk and enjoy the outdoors. At 11 o'clock, it's listed on Facebook. We're meeting at the Community Center at Magnuson Park, and you can look up the address on that Facebook invite or text me at 206-618-1456. I'm always happy to take constituent calls and questions. That goes for students as well. So thank you all. And there being no further business on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned at 8:57 p.m. Be well.